To the special and regular meeting of the Pacifica City Council, today is June 27th. It is now 5:34 PM. I appreciate everybody being here and tonight we are going to have a study session on our tree ordinance update. Now, before we begin, I just wanted to talk to my colleagues because last time we had a study session, it didn't feel like a study session to me and I think that kind of mixed me up a little bit. So, a study session should have like a little bit more freedom, right? And so I'm hoping that we'll be able to hear, like if we have questions for Tree City Pacifica, can we ask them and can they be promoted? Is that okay to do, Kevin?
I think it's the council's prerogative about, you know, promoting people. But, you know, certainly we take public comment on the study session items, right?
Yeah. So, and so my usual suggestion and as the manager is probably indicating, it's clearly up to the council, but the council can ask questions of people in the public without moving them up to panelists. So, that's always okay during public comment. It's not allowed during just oral presentations when, you know, we have our oral communications without a subject on the agenda, but when you have an item on the agenda, the council can ask questions of potential commenters with the concurrence of the rest of the council.
Okay. That cleared that up for me. Hello, Lisa. Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it and I'll let you begin.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure, Kevin, is the PowerPoint going to be available to run? I wasn't sure.
I need to, I need to check whether Management Analyst Bronte has the PowerPoint that was submitted and she can share that and if not, Lisa, I could allow you to share it directly from your computer.
Okay.
I'm just gonna pull it up here now, one second.
Okay, great.
Okay, well, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, council members, Lisa Peterson, Director of Public Works. We have with us here tonight also Sam Batista. He's our Deputy Director of Public Works, our city engineer. And we also have members of our consultant team, which is Davy Resource Group, and that is Ally Steer and Tina McKean. And they are, I believe, need to be promoted up though at some point, probably when we get to the questions. Hopefully, Sarah will have things moving or maybe Alyssa can do it at that, at that point. So, we do have a PowerPoint to provide for you tonight. So, we'll wait to see Alyssa if you can get that up and running, hopefully. Okay, see Allyson and Tina now.
I need screen here, one sec.
There we go, great, hi.
No, because I do not have screen share options.
I'm wondering, Kevin, do you need to provide a share for Alyssa?
Yes, I just did that.
Okay, so maybe she can share now then. Oh, there we go, great.
Okay, perfect.
Great, thank you so much. Again, we are here to have a study session with the council and this is a study session related to the tree ordinance update and also the draft ordinance for amending Pacifica Municipal Code, Chapter 12, which is tree preservation and Chapter 14, which is city trees. Next slide, please. I want to give a little background related to what has happened in the past on this. Council may remember that we came to council with a study session on May 23rd and to discuss the tree ordinance recommended changes. At that time, we discussed also the community outreach and benchmarking study. That was a very long and robust study that was completed, getting input from the community related to their desires on changes that would happen to the tree ordinance moving forward, also looking at nearby cities, similar cities that we were benchmarking against. We, at that meeting, also talked about some straightforward change recommendations that we felt should be in the ordinance changes that had very strong public support and were documented in that community outreach benchmarking study and also in the council report for May 23rd. And then we also had a conversation on some more complicated ordinance changes. Where staff needed council to provide some clarifying input in order for us to understand how those changes should be made. Next slide, please. So, I wanted to go quickly through some of those changes that we talked about last night and, I'm sorry, on the 23rd and that are also now in the attached draft ordinance. I do want to point out the attached draft ordinance is exactly that. It is a draft, so there still does need to be some editing with the numbers, but it was important to get it out there so you could see what we were thinking as far as the changes related to that draft, related to the final ordinance. So, on the 23rd, we talked about the ordinance revisions that we were recommending that had strong public support and these included providing a specific definition for heritage tree and protected tree. The public was in favor of using the industry standard for measuring tree diameter at 54 inches above the ground, for requiring an arborist report, for removal of any protected or heritage trees, for providing city website notification on removal of any protected and heritage trees. They wanted us to disincentivize the legal removals of trees and wanted us to establish a tree fund where monies could go into. They're interested and very supportive in requiring a two-to-one tree replacement for both protected and heritage tree removals and also allowing for in lieu fees for trees that would not be replaced on site. Next slide, please. And then we talked about some of the ordinance revisions where we needed some clarifying input related to the policy from council. That information related to the questions that were specifically asked to council and council's responses in your study session council report for tonight. I'm not going to go through all of those questions again. I do want to say that we felt we got consensus from the council related to those questions and based on council's input, we made changes to the ordinance and that's what I want to go through right now on this slide are those changes that we made based on the consensus we felt that we heard from the council. So, one of this was a specific definition of a heritage tree. So, that is now in the draft ordinance listed as a coast live oak, valley oak, California butt guy, Monterey pine, or a redwood tree that is 12 inches in diameter or greater, a toian tree, which is a native tree that is four inches in diameter or greater, and with designation, and I'll talk about what that means in a minute, a tree of historic value, specimen trees of any species, oldest or largest tree in Pacifica, a tree with significant habitat value or visually prominent from the community. Additionally, based on input from the council, council wanted the definition of a protected tree to mean all trees with a trunk diameter of 12 inches diameter or greater with the exception of invasive species, and this would be trees like eucalyptus trees. Council was interested in developers putting together a tree protection plan if there were trees that were going to be impacted. They were interested in seeing a permit for pruning a tree if 15% or more of the tree was going to be, going to be pruned. They wanted to have city staff not require a permit for a dead heritage or protected tree or a dying heritage or protected tree removal. And also for Chapter 12, tree preservation, they wanted that to also cover groves of trees six inches in diameter or greater. This allows for repealing of the logging ordinance, so all of that information is in one spot. Chapter 12 makes it much more accessible and easier to find. And just to clarify, we do consider grove of trees as 20 trees or more. Next slide, please. Also want to point out some other ordinance revisions that are in the draft ordinance. I wanted to talk a little bit about the designation of certain heritage trees by the Director of Public Works. And as we just talked about what that specific definition of a heritage tree would be, you probably noticed that some of that is very clear, such as a redwood tree that is 12 inches in diameter or greater. But there are some things that need to have staff complete evaluation on in order to determine if that really is a factor related to that tree. These are things such as historic value of the tree, if it's a specimen tree of a particular species, if it's the largest or oldest tree in Pacifica that has significant habitat value, or if it is a prominently visible tree for the community. Now, there are many trees in Pacifica, thousands, that we are not anticipating or expecting that we would go out and be looking at every single tree in Pacifica to assess those particular elements that I just mentioned. But what we would be doing is we would look at the designation being done at the same time as a tree removal or a pruning permit came into us. So, then at that time, we would be making that assessment. Additional ordinance revisions include that during a review of a tree permit, the building permit decisions would be put on hold. Any monies that are collected related to the ordinances would be held in a tree fund and that tree fund could be spent on specific things. This includes tree maintenance, tree preservation, tree inventory, education on trees and increasing the canopy in the city. The revisions allow for collection of the full cost of replacing mature protected trees that are illegally removed in addition to the $1,000 fine. And it also allows for emergency removal of trees that are presenting an immediate risk either to the health of persons or property in Pacifica. Next slide, please. So, our next steps would be to take any changes that council has for us or revisions at the study session tonight related to the draft ordinance and put that together and bring it to the next council meeting for an introduction of ordinance. This would be followed by adoption of the ordinance. And after, once the, once the ordinances were adopted, we would begin Phase Two. This is the urban forest land administration management plan. What is included in that is updating the city's tree inventory, completing tree mapping, putting together a policy for tree risk management and tree reduction. Also, development of a tree permit exemption based on risk for fire. We'd be looking at short and long-term management planning and completing a tree canopy study. And in addition, you know, of course, we would have many partners on this. Some of our key partners I just wanted to mention would also be the fire department, the open space and parkland advisory committee and the emergency preparedness and safety commission. And with that, that's the end of my presentation and we are now here to answer any questions or help clarify anything for the council. And again, we do have our whole team here, so we have Deputy Director Batista and we have Ally and Tina from Davy Resource Group.
Hey, thank you so much, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. And does anybody have any questions before we go to public comment? Sue, Councilmember Vada Los.
Sue's fine. The previous tree person, I'm sorry, mentioned the pines and we have them as heritage trees and he said that every pine in Pacifica has pine pitch canker. So, just question as to why we still show them as heritage trees if every one of them is ill?
And I think that's a great question. There are very different degrees of pine pitch canker. So, there are some trees that can have some infection, but it is not something that is, you know, eminently killing the tree, the tree is dying. And yet, there are some that are dying. So, that is an assessment that we would do when we go out and take a look at the tree. There are many Monterey pines in the city, so I think the goal was to not clear cut those trees, but for us to evaluate them, to see how severely diseased they are because some of them, you know, it's very, very hard to tell. Only an arborist would know.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, let's go to a public comment. Alyssa, do we have any hands up?
Yes, there is currently one hand raised by Gail.
Wonderful.
Gail, you may now unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, Gail.
So, Tree City Pacifica has been scrambling since the draft of the tree ordinance was released on Thursday. We reviewed the draft carefully and we emailed our request for changes and additions to all of the city council members on Sunday. I'm going to go over the highlights of these requests in my comments. In light of the city talking about adopting a canopy goal, we request that the definition of a grove be changed from a cluster of 20 trees to a cluster of 10 trees. This will help Pacifica protect the urban forest and work towards a canopy goal. Secondly, we request that arborist reports include an ISA basic tree risk assessment form. This industry standard will help avoid the situation at appeals when council members and commissioners are presented with arborist reports displaying opposite points of view depending on who is paying them. We suggest that replacement trees be a minimum of 1.5 inches, as in the draft, and/or a 15-gallon tree. Most West Coast nurseries use terms like 15-gallon or 24-inch box to refer to the size of trees and might be confused by that 1.5 inches. Regarding building permits, we request the addition of the statement that no trees are removed until building permits are finalized. This is different than the statement that was presented in the presentation. Regarding notices, we request that citizens be given 10 business days to file appeals. Regarding calendar days, if a tree is posted, say on a Friday, city offices will only be open five and a half days and that's very difficult for someone to file an appeal. We anticipate that there will be fewer appeals when the city website publicizes reasons for the removal of trees. We request that citizens have the opportunity to suggest candidates for heritage trees and have a process for appeal if the request is denied. It would be great to have a city committee, either under a commission or another committee, focused on the identification of heritage trees. Regarding violations, we request the addition of a clear statement that tree companies violating the ordinances shall be subject to fines, fees and the potential loss of their business licenses. Currently, they're mentioned under the definition of person, but that could be confusing. If companies request permits before doing work, this will protect homeowners who are unaware of ordinances. And then in Chapter 14, with the removal of city trees, we request the same notification process as stated in Chapter 12 with appeals filed within 10 business days. And also that mitigation for the removal of city trees should also be the two-to-one replacement ratio. This standard will help council members and commissioners determine mitigation in appeals regarding the removal of city trees.
Oh, please do not cut her off. I would like Gail to be able to continue. I think she's the only person here with a public comment, if that's okay. Oh, no, there's another one. Is it okay to let Gail continue for another minute, please, council? Thank you.
Am I heard? I actually was just finishing up and saying that in, in the email that we've sent to all of you and Lisa and Sam, it details exactly where in the ordinance these additions can be made and there are four or five other little things that are actually repeated from place to place that are also in those comments. So, we would really like you to look very carefully at the very specific wording and requests in our email. And thank you so much for working on protecting our urban forest.
Thank you, Gail.
Madam Mayor, there is one more hand raised at this time by Cindy Abbott. Let me give a second to reset the timer. Okay, Cindy, you may now unmute yourself.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you all for your work so far and continued focus on this important issue for our climate and community. And I really appreciate all the work that Tree City Pacifica has completed to analyze and continue to document so well some of the requests that are being made from that organization. I specifically want to agree with the definition of a grove of trees and decreasing that to 10 trees. Many of you visited the grove of trees that is across the street from my own home on Salata Avenue. That group of trees was eight trees. Council removed one of those trees. But you may recall that it is significant at eight trees, so 20 is an awful lot. And so I think 10 is a much more appropriate number. The applications for tree removals permits, that ISA basic tree risk assessment form is critical to removing some of the back and forth between different individuals that have come before appeals. Mayor Beer knows this. Having documentation that's unbiased and not something subject to individual discernment based on who is paying for that appeal is really critical. So, please include that ISA basic tree risk assessment form by a certified arborist. That will help out everyone so much. And I think it's critical with how long projects take that also in that section that no trees be removed until building permits is finalized is also critical because once that tree is gone, it's too late. It can't come back the way some of our magnificent trees are. The designation of heritage trees, a couple of things there. I also think there should be a way that citizens can suggest or recommend what those key trees are in our community. We live with them. It's more than the possibility of looking at dimensions. I think it's important citizens be able to have input too. And it's quite unclear to me on item B in that section for 1208, how often that process of updating the website and designating new trees is going to be. Final word, I didn't see the PBNR Commission as a key partner. Trees are in our parks and we hear the appeals. That commission needs to be part of this process. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. Madam Mayor, there are no other hand raised at this time.
All right, we will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council. So, it might be a good idea for us to go through the ordinance section by section like we've been doing everything else. I know that Tree City Pacifica sent in several items and, you know, I'm just gonna say it, we are really lucky to have them because they are out there spending all their time working and thinking about trees only. And so, it's pretty extraordinary that we have that group of citizens. So, what do you think about that? Would you like to go through the ordinance section by section or would you like to start with something else? You can unmute and just talk to me. I don't have to call on you. Thoughts?
I have the email that Gail sent us last night. I thought I had it loaded up. It's loading now, so I definitely wanted to go through it in those terms. And after that, your process sounds fine, but whatever gets us there.
Yeah, and I think they're reflected in the changes that... So, we went, I went through the ordinance too with Tree City and so I was able to write down a lot of the changes section by section. So, I'm happy to do that too. Which is, anyone have any questions or anything? Sue Beckmeyer, what are your thoughts?
I think going through section by section would be great and I'm appreciating that you met with them because I didn't have a chance to meet recently in the last couple of weeks. So, if you could help guide us through any of the particular points that were really impactful, that we really need to be clear on, that would be much appreciated.
Okay. I'm happy to do so. Okay, well, let's go ahead and start then. So, in the very first section, you know, what was really nice is they were really happy with a lot of it. So, there were sections where they're like, this is great. We don't want any changes and we don't hear that an awful lot and that just goes to show all the work that our, our city has done. The one thing that did stand out from the beginning is the trees, the number of trees in a grove. So, I'm, I'm happy to discuss 10 trees with you all and see how you feel about that. Okay, so, go ahead, Sue.
I'm trying to, you know, I'm thinking about recent developments that either came to us on appeal or were big projects like the one off that's ran parallel to Rockaway Beach Avenue, the one that Cindy Abbott just referred to, which had eight, has now eight trees on that property. I'm trying to sort of get a visual for eight trees, 10 trees versus 20 trees. And for my colleagues who've formerly been on the planning commission, I wonder what your thoughts are on this in terms of as a condition for projects that come forward? How, in your experience, the number of trees in a grove or that, how often that has come up in the past? In terms of, is this going to create a big amount of workload impact? Is that going to double or triple or maybe it's half as many trees, right? But I just don't, if it only comes up once a year or once every 10 projects, then maybe it's not a significant impact. So, I just want to hear from people that have more experience on planning than I do, which is not it.
So, as somebody who traditionally had the least amount of planning experience on planning commission, this is usually the moment I would turn to our planning director, Christian Murdock, and say, Christian, could you maybe give us some insight in that vein? And then see if he would be so kind as to give us such an insight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Potem. Good evening or afternoon, honorable council members, Acting Planning Director, Christian Murdock. I think the question of how to define and regulate groves of trees is an interesting one. I can certainly understand the benefits of doing that, you know, in favor of tree protection. I think what is important is to look at how grove is defined in this proposed ordinance. Where we would typically encounter a similar type of circumstance under current regulations at the planning commission level is when a property owner is proposing to remove 20 or more trees on one's own property. However, this definition of grove, you know, at whatever number you would set it, would have a different set of parameters for how that term is defined. And so it would include trees potentially on another property. And it's not clear whether the protected tree status would kick in if any, you know, even a single tree in that grove were proposed to be removed or not. So I think there needs to be a clearer understanding of the relationship of a particular project and the removal of one or more trees to the overall grove and what the intent is of, of that mechanism. You know, certainly it would make sense if the entire grove was proposed for removal, but I think short of that, there's some work that may need to be done to clarify the relationship and intent of this ordinance to the removal of some, some smaller portion of the grove.
Thank you, Christian. Subba Los, do you have any opinions on that?
Made it more confusing for me. But I, I can see that, you know, it depends, it, it totally depends on what's happening. I mean, it's not one size fits all. You know, if there are 10 trees here or 20 trees there and a couple of them need to be removed, then they need to be removed. So it seems like it could be on an individual basis.
Well, I think
Instead of a strict definition.
I, I think when they were talking about this, they were concerned about logging. Right? And so we really want to make sure that, that that's addressed. And so I'm happy to put the 10 trees in this definition. Based on that.
And if I could clarify, Mayor? Yes, so just so that that is very clear, exactly what Mayor Beer said. This is old language that has been in the ordinance for the logging, the logging ordinance for many years. So this is just transferring it and putting it into chapter 12 because those ordinances were very difficult to locate. So there's no change. And all it is, is just putting it all in one spot. So however, this has been utilized in the past 20 years or so that it's been in place, it would be anticipated to be utilized the same way.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
That makes it much easier for me to go along with 10 trees.
10 trees. Great.
Mayor Beer?
Yes.
Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. In the spirit of like more flexible study session guidelines, I, I thought I, I would wanted to pose a question here that maybe the consultants could chime into. In, in the work that I did with the Mid-Neslau Regional Open Space District forest management practices, sometimes removal of trees is necessary for the overall health and benefit of the rest of the trees in a, in a grove. That is, you know, sustainable practices, thinning out trees. So when you're talking about a grove of trees and you may need to remove some so the rest can grow healthy, that's, you know, I have limited experience in that, but I wanted to kind of ask the question for Director Peterson or the consultants about how are we handling that in this ordinance? You have a grove of trees, whether it's 10 or 20, but it, it's necessary to, for their health to remove some that are in that grove. And how does this definition relate to that practice?
Yes. Oh, go, go ahead. I'm sorry, Tina, go ahead.
That's all right. I believe those individual trees can be removed. It doesn't have any, it does not affect the logging ordinance language. The logging ordinance language is to prevent the entire grove from being removed. It doesn't, the individual trees would still fall under the rest of the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you for that question. The next section that they were talking about is section 412.04, the application for tree removal permits. And I think it goes back to including the ISA basic tree assessment forms. So about three quarters of way down the paragraph in A, it says an arborist report. And they would like to add including, including ISA basic tree assessment form. And I think we've heard them say over and over again how important it is to have this ISA assessment form used. And I can remember being on the commission. I think it was my very first commission meeting and they're like, oh, you have a tree appeal. I'm like, what do you mean? Like, I didn't know anything. And I, I was supposed to like make a decision about a tree. But if there's like a standard form, it might make it easier for a lot of people to have that. Thoughts? Lisa, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I just wanted to provide some clarification related to this. So currently, the city does request this ISA basic tree risk assessment form in circumstances where we feel that it's needed. However, we don't ask for it in all cases because we don't always feel it's needed. And it is an additional cost. So we just want to clarify that for the council. So what we've been told, but generally from our arborists is, you know, the cost for a regular a person to get an arborist report for a tree is going to be anywhere from $400 to $600. And once you ask for the ISA report, you're going to be adding on approximately another $200 into the cost. So it is important to know that. I think generally, I completely agree that they are very important in, in particular cases, but not necessarily required in all cases. And consequently, we would also, I want to mention in phase two, be doing this risk assessment policy, which will be playing into this exact same element of the ISA basic tree risk assessment form. So just a little bit more information for you on that.
Thank you.
Can I add a little bit more information there as well?
Sure.
So the other thing is that the risk assessment is really specific to risk and trees can be, have another reason why they're failing that may not create a risk. And that would be, that would be underlined in the arborist report itself. So as Lisa said, not every tree would benefit from a risk assessment. And it, and it doesn't, in my experience, it also doesn't keep arborists from disagreeing, unfortunately. Even, even two arborists doing the same risk assessment form may come up with different outcomes.
Well, I'll go ahead and thank you. Thank you for all that information. I am, I am gonna advocate for it because Tree City Pacifica has been talking about it the entire time. On the, in a lot of the sections, right? So we have it.
I've got a clarifying question.
Yeah, please.
And I appreciate that we're updating the heritage tree ordinance, but the way I'm reading it, it's not connecting in my mind if, as I'm reading that, we're talking about all trees or just heritage trees requiring the ISA report.
So currently, what we're talking about are any trees that are under the definition of protected trees, which would be all, which also under that definition is also heritage tree. So that would be any tree 12 inches in diameter or greater. Any tree within Pacifica.
Within that context, it's easy for me to go along with the report for those trees specifically, especially within the context of we're discussing. I mean, I, I sat in on the one appeal that, I'm not sure if it was on Salada or one of those neighborhoods down in Manor where it was he said versus he said, and there was no definitive report, if I recall. And it, it was a kind of a messy appeal hearing because there was nothing definitive. And this, that struck me as one instance in which this definitely would have helped. So if it's, you know, these protected trees, these heritage trees, special status trees that would require the report, that seems reasonable to me.
And Tina, does it offer a, a point system?
It does. And, and that's part of the challenge is that just because a tree is failing, doesn't mean it's actually high risk. There's a lot of things that go into risk, including target and size of the part that's likely to fail.
Thank you. Do we have nods to add, to add that in? I know we got one from, from Tiger. Sue and Sue?
Well, I, I, I think we should be clear on exactly what council member Big Stick was. I, I thought I heard him saying that he wanted to include the ANSI for protected trees, but not necessarily all trees that are requested, requesting removal permits. Is that correct?
Well, that's what
That, that I believe is the context within which we're, we're discussing this.
Yes.
That's the suggestion of the language that was submitted.
Yes.
Specifically, it reads, and our, so where the phrase an arborist report appears on line one, two, three.
Yeah, removal of protected trees.
One, two, yeah. Yeah, it definitely even says it in the first sentence. It states it in the amendment. So at the end where it says, "The applicant must be required to provide a plot, plan, or survey drawn to scale depicting the tree, trees, and any improvements on the property and/or an arborist report." They would add, then, with the new language would go on to say, "Including an ISA basic tree risk assessment form will be required for removal of a protected tree."
Yeah.
So it's the arborist report, including the ISA basic tree risk assessment form will be required for removal of a protected tree.
Yeah.
I see. And then we're not changing the, in the general definition section where it would apply to potentially more than just the protected tree.
It's under section 4-12.04, application page two.
Correct. Correct. I just wanted to make that clarification, that we're not amending the definition of arborist report.
Correct. Okay. The next section that they talked about, and I think that the numbers and the letters are a little mixed up here, but going down the same sections, A, B, C, onto the next page, it says A, but I think that's supposed to be D. And then the next, the next one after that says B, but I think it's supposed to be E. But, you know, you can change that later. Is that correct, Lisa?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Beer. This, as I mentioned, some of the, it's still a draft and we're still working on it since some of the numbers are off, but we'll put there this time.
And I, there was a question if, if the, the one that says B, but it's E, covers groves, too? To mitigate the adverse effects of tree removal treatment and/or hmm?
So this one is talking about mitigating adverse effects of tree removal. Where a tree removal permit is required. So I, you know, it's typically what we've been saying is if we are removing a tree and it is under the definition of a protected tree, then you need to do the replacement. And if you look at the definition of protected tree, under there is any groves of trees. Say that requires replacement.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then when there's one, two, three, it says replacement trees be a minimum of one and a half inches measured with calipers unless otherwise approved by the director. And they would like it to say and/or 15 gallon. So that that's how it's stated in other cities. Any thoughts about that from our professionals that are here? Tina or Ally?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So one and a half inches caliper is a standard measurement in the nursery industry. And it makes it so that way a person could purchase a tree that is a containerized tree, a bare root or a bald and burlap tree. And they would all be measured the same way. And it's a standard practice. So, um, yes.
But is it okay to add to that and/or 15 gallon?
I think it's redundant.
Well, and, and if I could just interject, thank you, Ally. It's important to note that not all 15 gallon trees might be inch and a half. So you might end up with a smaller tree. So I think that was one of the reasons it was put in there, but ultimately, you know, it's up to council's discretion, how they'd like that to read.
I was about to ask that. Could you have a 15 gallon or 24 inch box with a really tiny little tree in the middle of it? Right? So I think we want, what we're talking about here is a tree of robust enough size to, you know, be growing quickly and getting an established tree, not a tiny baby one that just started a year ago.
I think we leave that one alone because I think you're opening a can of worms if you say 15 gallon because it could be anything.
The thing though, that I think I heard in the original, I think when Gail was speaking to it, was it was more common maybe to the purse to, you know, the citizen, if they're reading the ordinance themselves, that might be the, the reason.
Yeah. I know Gail's raised her hand. Counsel, would you mind if we hear from her? And Michelle, is it okay for us to do so?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a study session. So counsel is, has much more flexibility in terms of procedure.
Counsel, is that okay with you?
Yes.
Go ahead, Gail.
I just wanted to say that we have a landscape architect who is part of Tree City Pacifica, and we discussed this with him. And he said, most of the nurseries that they work with, including the nurseries that the city works with, don't really use that measurement. They use 15 gallon or 24 inch box. So maybe there's a way of saying that it must be at least 1.5 inches and a 15 gallon tree so that it's easy to work with nurseries. Now, this was the opinion of one landscape architect, but he has done a lot of work locally.
Thank you, Gail.
I feel like when I hear Planning Commission talk about their various projects, they usually use the nomenclature of a 24 inch box tree. For whatever that's worth. And I see that as an option.
The 15 gallon parentheses, 24 inch box of, with a minimum, as it states here, with the minimum tree size of one and 1.5 inches measured with calipers. So that the two are integrated. To avoid the big box, tiny tree situation.
I guess that's a question for our experts.
Well, hi. I mean, I think that's really a drafting question. And yes, we can draft it so that the, the, the intent is really to describe it as a 15 gallon, 24 inch, but at a minimum must have 1.5 inches measured with calipers. So we, we can, we're not, we don't, we will draft that if that's the consensus of, of the council later. We're not gonna, we don't need to draft it now. This is just a study session. But if that's the consensus of a majority of you, we certainly can draft that into the ordinance.
Subba Los, you okay with that? Okay. Awesome. Thank you. And then another thing that they were really passionate about is, and I think it would go under number five at the bottom of the same page, that no tree will be removed until a building permit is finalized. I don't know how you feel about that. And maybe we can get some information from Lisa or Christian about, about what that means. Tiger, do you have any thoughts about that?
My initial thought is that I'm okay with that language, but certainly I'd want to hear Christian's insights as I, I typically do.
Thank you again, counsel. I think the, the concept certainly is sensible. There's no point in removing a tree until such time as the project approval, you know, is reasonably foreseeable or, and construction is reasonably foreseeable to occur. I think I may have been asked this question previously and I explained there I think I may have been asked this question previously, and I explained there are instances where a grading permit may also need to be issued and sometimes is requested in advance of a building permit. And as you can imagine, trees could get in the way of site grading that's approved. And so I think if there's some accommodation for allowing, you know, pre-building permit grading to occur, that could be a better accommodation. Otherwise applicants will be forced to delay their, their preparatory grading until such time as they also have a building permit. And that could have overall project timeline impacts for a development.
Lisa?
Yeah, and if I could just point out, and I, you know, and maybe this is something we can, we can get Acting Planning Director Murdoch's opinion on, but there is something that is in the ordinance that states, "While the tree removal application process is underway," this is for, "While the tree removal application process is underway, the building permit issuance and associated administrative approvals will be delayed until the tree permit decision and any appeals is finished." So I don't know if you would think that would allow enough wiggle room that somebody could then get a grading permit. And I know sometimes too, they do delay things like finalization of the electrical permits. So just maybe your thoughts on that, Acting Planning Director?
Yes, thank you, Director Peterson. I think I'd like another moment to think about that language in the context of this question. I'm not sure exactly what a tree encroachment permit means, if that's the same thing as a, like a heritage tree permit application, and to ensure that it would apply to the right sets of circumstances.
Tina?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that grading itself could be hazardous to any trees that you might want to protect. So it's just important to understand that.
Yeah, I don't want to be putting words in Tree City's mouth. I certainly don't want to be doing that, but I am now concerned that there's a difference between a building permit and a grading permit. And my concern is that perhaps, and the thing that may have brought forward, that Tree City is very concerned about making sure this is in there. They weren't considering a grading permit as being another step in the process sometimes that could, as you state, have implications for trees. Right? I mean, you're trying to grade the lot, the trees are in the way. The building permit's a separate issue. So how do we rectify this to make sure that the edit is doing what is being requested? You know, why it's being requested, that the edit is accomplishing the purpose for which it was requested.
So might it be something along the lines of a tree permit won't be issued until a grading permit has been issued unless there is no grading permit issued, in which case the tree permit won't be issued until a building permit is issued?
That's a lot of issues. A mouthful. So one thing that I would ask the council to think about is that a lot of times when you do get these development applications, they are very fact-specific. And usually, these types of conditions would be conditions of approval in the project, and they, and they should be. And, and they are tailored to the specific needs of that project. This issue, which I believe we should address, is one that can be addressed through conditions of approval. And I would just ask the, you know, Mr. Murdoch, you know, what method he thinks would be the best method to address this issue for these projects? Would it be to try to craft one rule in this ordinance? And, and, and you know, I appreciate Council, you know, Vice Mayor Big Stick's, you know, proposed draft, but you know, how does that cover all of the potentialities that could arise? When normally, when we're dealing with projects, we, you know, are very careful in how we draft those conditions of approval to address issues just like this that you may not know about until you actually have the application materials in front of you to know what their grading, what their building permit issue is, what's the timing of all this? So I would just, you know, ask Planning Director Murdoch if he has any thoughts on that. I don't, you know, I just want, I just, my job is to spot the issue. So I've spotted the issue. I'm not telling you how it's going to be solved. I just think we should hear from Planning Director Murdoch on that potential way to solve this issue.
Right. Thank you, City Attorney Kenyon. I think we need to remember that there are two types of projects in Pacifica. There are ministerial projects that require a building permit only. And there are discretionary projects that require certain permits approved by the Planning Commission in most cases before the city can issue a building permit. And so we just want to be sure that the approach that we take accounts for both types of processes. It's currently the process that the city will not issue a building permit where a heritage tree permit is required until that heritage tree permit is received. Similarly, for discretionary permit, the city will not issue a building permit until all discretionary permits are granted, including the heritage tree removal authorization. I think really we're looking for a different mechanism here, which is even if a heritage tree removal permit has been granted, the trees cannot be removed until a building permit is issued. And I'm not sure that that's exactly the way that I'm reading the language that's in here. And so we may just want to take a look one more time to make sure it's addressing the actual issue here. And then once we focus in on that, you know, figuring out where to insert grading permit, certainly the city council could tilt the balance fully in favor of tree protection and not allow any of the trees to be removed until all required development-related permits are issued, including a building permit and grading permit. But that's not without potential consequences, you know, including other valuable public policy interests such as ensuring grading is done during the time of year where it's least likely to rain and include runoff. Developers are very sensitive to those timelines and are, and try to be respectful of the city's, you know, concerns about grading in the rainy season, very much want to commence their grading, complete it, and begin some of the initial stages of construction during that time of year, generally May through September, when they don't have to take extraordinary measures or get special permission to do so. So there are some interrelated issues in the development process that we need to carefully think through so as not to frustrate other desires of the city council related to resource protection.
Yeah, part of my read in terms of the request has something to do with the idea that they're, they don't know that they're going to go through with the project and might start removing trees before they know that it's going to actually come to fruition. And that's what we're trying to stop from happening.
Right. And so I think to that end, you know, it's possible, you know, a simple provisions such as, you know, no tree authorized for removal under a heritage tree removal permit may be removed until all, you know, permits requisite for the development have been issued. That's tilting it towards the full protection side. And we could maybe spend a little time thinking about, you know, is that the right balance to strike? And what are the, you know, secondary consequences of that?
And, and if that were the case, we would also want to draft in there an exception for the circumstances that Planning Director just spoke about. So I think, you know, this is, this is not something that we're going to be able to draft tonight. So I think it's a good idea for the council to deliberate on this concept thoroughly so that we as staff can get an idea of what, you know, the consensus is so that we can go back and draft something. And perhaps, you know, if we're able, we can maybe draft something based on your conversation. I'm not hopeful, but we can try. But it would be very helpful if we could just hear your sort of consensus on how you would like to see this dealt with. I think the issues that Planning Director Murdoch laid out pretty clearly are we could adopt a general rule, right? This is an ordinance. So the rules, you know, you, you don't want to put in so many exceptions that you eviscerate the rule. So you need to, if you want a general rule in here, you know, keep in mind that you really want a general rule. You don't want a lot of exceptions. So that's one thing. The other issue that Director Murdoch and, and I agree with, just pointed out, there may be unusual circumstances related to a discretionary development permit application that may, we may want the grading of the tree to be done before the building permit is issued for, for various reasons. But we can't, we can't think of them all right now, but, but there may be good and valuable reasons. We would want to have, allow some exception to allow for that. The question is, how broad would that exception have to be in order to cover situations that we can't even think of right now? Which is why I was wondering, is, is there a way to sort of address this generally, but give the planning staff and then the planning commission, and then perhaps ultimately the council, if it's ever appealed, to really decide on a case-by-case basis, based on the project in front of them, what's the timing for removal of the tree? I'll leave that in the hands of the council.
Tina?
Not, not discounting any of those comments at all. I'll just want to add a little more information. So part of getting the, the arborist report on the construction site is to identify the tree protection zones. And as I mentioned before, grading itself can harm the roots of, of its protected tree. The other consideration is, is that it's, it, the way the ordinance is written right now, it's illegal to harm a protected or heritage tree. So you might unknowingly do that if you haven't already gotten an arborist report. And also a little comment on grading during the dry season. I completely understand that. I come from a construction standpoint, as well as an arborist standpoint. But causing damage to the root system during the dry part of the year without applying supplemental watering, which you, would also be something an arborist would call out as a tree protection specification, could actually kill the tree as well. So the combination of damaging the roots during the dry season, not providing supplemental watering, and not knowing where the tree protection zone is, you may lose trees if, if they're not protected prior to that.
And I think that's the whole point, right, is to protect them prior to that. At least that's how I see it. And so to deliberate that fully, not quite sure how to do that, but go ahead, Tiger.
Yeah, so, and I am getting a little out of my depth, but might it be appropriate here to insert some sort of language about bonding the trees? The developer to bond the trees before?
Tina has her hand up again.
Yeah.
Yes? Oh, no? Okay.
Maybe Christian or Michelle has insight.
I, I didn't clear my hand, but I can comment on that. You can bond a tree. We talked about it in the beginning, but we felt that it was excessive and likely didn't fit the needs of your community.
Well, might it?
Under.
In this instance.
It is, it is definitely. Go ahead, Allison.
Yeah, pardon me for interrupting Councilmember, or excuse me, Mayor Prove Tim. We do have a piece within section twelve point zero one zero, Tree Protection and Preservation Plans. There is under section, if the numbers are right, number seven, performance security. So performance, performance security, whether by security bond, cash deposit, or other security acceptable to the city shall be required prior to issuance of the tree encroachment permit. So that might be addressing what you're suggesting.
That's the one.
I don't know if we gave direction or not.
I, I don't have direction.
I think maybe we just want to make sure that the tree's protected before, you know, people just can't take down a tree before their project is fully.
To the point made by Tina just now, if you're trying, if you damage the roots during dry season grading because you didn't do the watering, you're defeating the whole purpose. So I think, as Christian originally asked, what is the intent of this? The intent is to protect the tree.
Right.
So whether that means building and grading.
Grading.
I, I feel like it does.
I feel like it does too.
To allow the discretion, it should, the exception that, that Michelle was referring to, because I think that would have to, wouldn't it still have to have probably Planning Commission approval anyway? If you brought it forward, Christian, like you said, well, this policy says no grading, no building permit. But in this particular instance, we have da, 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 da. You would bring that to the Planning Commission, would you not?
Well, I think it depends on the mechanism that the council builds into the ordinance. And so it's possible that a project that would not otherwise go to the Planning Commission might be caught in this situation. You know, a single-family residence on a hillside lot, you know, in the R1 district might not need to go to the Planning Commission, but for some exception, if that's what the council wanted. I think as City Attorney Kenyon mentioned, perhaps trying to give some guidance on the range of, of situations that the council would want to provide some relief to that strict limitation would make sense. For instance, you know, unless the timing of the grading would advance other public interests, such as, you know, grading within the dry season, something along those lines. So at least, hey, there's one or two exceptions that we can anticipate and contemplate that would allow the grading to proceed before issuance of a building permit, for instance, but not sort of taking the lid off or having too many exceptions such that it undercuts the intent. When I, when I spoke earlier about just be aware of the, the secondary consequences, to put a finer point on that, very often what you'll see with medium and large-sized projects is that the review involved for the building permit is much more extensive and time-intensive than the review for a grading permit in most instances. And the grading needs to be completed before you can begin building in, in, in most circumstances. And so what you'll see is the developer will come in very quickly to begin review of a grading permit so that they, they can begin grading, you know, some months prior to ultimately receiving a building permit. And so if the council were to go sort of the quote-unquote full protection route and require that both the grading permit and building permit be issued, the practical effect is that projects might be delayed, you know, three, four, six months from when they would otherwise be able to begin that site preparation and grading work. And so that's the, simply the consequence of that type of timing component.
I get the point of this, but the practicality of it doesn't seem like it's going to happen. Because if you're going to take them on an individual basis anyway, if we start putting these requirements in and a discretionary project will have to go to planning, I mean, it could take them three or four years more to go to planning based on grading and a tree.
Yeah.
So I would like, I mean, again, one size doesn't fit all. And it seems like these are individual processes that could be taken up by the planning department. Not necessarily in the ordinance.
So there's already an arborist report happening? In this instance, all these scenarios that we've been talking about?
Yes.
Yes. So could not that be part of the arborist's review? You know, would they be looking at that if they're, if they're talking about a tree protection plan? Wouldn't they be taken into account, oh, it's the dry season, this needs to be watered?
Yes, and I, and I think that, that they can, you know, we can make sure that when they're doing that, that they're putting something in related to that. Specifically, so it could be part of the review of the arborist report.
Right. I think that's the appropriate place because certainly this councilperson cannot think of every possible scenario. We'll be here all night if we.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm comfortable with the arborist's report being that extra layer of checking because it will be a specific project being brought forward at a specific time. So that's just going to be part of their checklist anyway, isn't it?
Well, if I could offer some insight into how the, the development review process actually works is that it, it's often a lengthy process. And one might prepare an arborist's report for proposed removal of heritage trees or grading within a drip line that might necessitate the removal, you know, months, if not years, before even knowing when the project will go to hearing and when approval is. and when an approval decision might be granted by the city. And so I think it's asking a little bit much to expect an arborist at some very preliminary stage in a project before it's even been submitted to the city, right, as an applicant's preparing all of its required informational items to submit to the city to necessarily anticipate, you know, the timing of when, you know, grading might be commenced relative to the, the project construction. And so that, I think, I, I don't, it, it makes sense in concept. I'm not sure in practice that it would be the right time unless there was like a implementation component post approval, you know, a secondary validation of the findings and specific, you know, construction timing recommendations, but that adds another layer of bureaucracy on to the applicant in the project process.
Michelle? So if I could just, you know, um, suggest what I believe I'm hearing, just to get some confirmation, because I, I think I, I, I have but, well, let me ask the question of the council to see if this is the consensus that I'm hearing. The council would like to pr- provide protection for these trees prior to grading permit issuance and building permit issuance. However, the council is also interested in allowing the planning director at some point, the discretion to determine if an exception to this rule might be warranted based on the particular circumstances of, of this, of, and any application before the planning director. Because I, I think that, that with regard to, you know, a- and, you know, Planning Director Murdock, if, if I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm really focusing on the discretionary permits. You also mentioned non-discretionary permits that, that could be, and I'm not, y- you're gonna have to jump in here if what I'm saying, it doesn't apply to those. But I think with regard to the discretionary permits, we could draft, and, you know, I don't have the language here. I'll work with the planning director to, to try and figure out what would be those general, right, health and safety issues that could arise, that would warrant allowing, um, a grading permit issuance prior to, you know, a tree removal permit because the grading is not going to occur, you know, near the protected tree, or who knows, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out. But if that is the consensus, then my recommendation is to, to confirm that with the council. And then we as staff, this is just a study session, can go back and try and craft that language for you. We don't need to craft the language tonight. I just need to get consensus on what is the direction for this particular provision that you want us to try to craft.
I think you captured it. What you just described is what I'm thinking.
I hear you. Good.
Well, I think the whole point of it was that somebody doesn't just take their land prior to getting permits and go and chop down all the trees. That's all.
Yes.
So I think that's the whole point of this whole, um, segment.
Right.
And then not go through with their project, but now the trees are cut down. So.
Exactly. Exactly, Subalos. Okay, so it's six forty-seven, and I think there's like two big, big other things. There's more than that, of course, but there's two big things that they mentioned. One was in the noticing, um, for the appeals. If it could be ten, um, calendar days instead of, ten business days instead of ten calendar days.
Um, I'm gonna disagree. Everything else we have is ten days. There are computers. It's not like you have to deliver things in person. You can do it by computer. Um, everyone has access to computers these days. And, um, I think we leave it the same as our other appeal process that we have with ten days.
Karen Woodhouse.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Beer. I was, um, gonna just chime in here that, uh, consistency about appeals processes is important to the city to try to minimize confusion from applicants and appeals.
That's what I thought. That, that's what I thought was going to come back when I mentioned it. Uh, Subek, Mayor Tiger, do you have any thoughts?
Well, I, I was going to go in the opposite direction that our regular appeals should be five business or ten business days also.
That's what I was thinking too. Yeah, change it across the board.
But now we're outside our scope.
We're talking about trees right now, so. Subek, Mayor.
I like the idea of having one thing be different than all the others. I think that, I think we have confusing enough processes as it is to just have to constantly remember, oh, but for trees, it's this other thing. Okay.
So Maybe for the sake of consistency, we keep it calendar days for the moment, but perhaps there's a, uh, appropriate time to come back to the question of everything across the board at a later date.
I think so too.
And we have a hand.
Not surprisingly. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Gail.
In terms of consistency, the current number of days for heritage trees is seven. So that doesn't seem to be consistent with the statement about every, all appeals being ten calendar days. So, uh, we are hoping that, maybe they can all be twenty calendar days. But something that then has at least two weeks of the offices being open so that people who are confused, because right now the, the postings say to go to Santa Maria Avenue. So, um, anyway, it would, it would be great if it could be across the board.
Thanks, Gail. City Manager Woodhouse.
I was just gonna say, I think Ms. Shoemaker identifies one reason we are going through this process to update the heritage tree ordinance and improve things such as the appeals period to be consistent with our other practices. Fifteen it from seven to ten days.
Okay, I think we have a consensus about that. Okay, uh, the next thing is under violations for twelve dot thirteen. Really stating that it's not only, um, any person violating any of the provisions, but and or business as well.
If I could jump in with a clarification, Mayor, does that work? Yeah, so just under the definitions to note that it says person shall mean individual firm, association, tree removal service, corporation. So it's actually is covered under that term.
Madam Mayor, we have a hand.
Oh, excellent. Go ahead, Gail.
I really appreciate being allowed to speak. I think it will be very confusing to tree businesses to find out, to find under definitions under person that they're included. And where it's not in violations. And Tree City Pacifica would not only like to see that tree companies understand they could have fines and fees, but that there's a possibility they could lose their license in other cities when someone calls a tree company and they come, they say, oh, I can't do that without a permit or I would lose my license. And that then propels the homeowner to get a permit. So this actually, having this language protects homeowners who know nothing about ordinances because then tree companies are diligent about getting permits from homeowners before they start to work.
Thank you. Thoughts or comments about that? I appreciate that it's under the definition, maybe can be clearer.
Yeah, sure, we can, we can take a look at that.
Or, or we can just, instead of relying on the definition, we can just state it in that section. Right? That would be helpful. Right. We, we'll just restate it again. Okay.
That's good.
Tiger, did you see anything else on the, um, email by any chance? There's one more that I'm not seeing fully.
So the first one she mentions is four dash twelve point oh one in tweaking some of the language there, I think.
Can you see if she mentions four dash fourteen oh seven? Cause I have notes, but they're not, they're not clear to me, unfortunately.
But that comes later, Mary, because that's maintenance and preservation of city trees.
Right.
For fourteen. So we haven't gotten to chapter fourteen.
Four fourteen oh seven was the, um, I have some rest form.
Right? Am I wrong? I see the hand.
Go ahead, Gail.
Thank you. Um, yeah, this is the last big thing that Tree City Pacifica has identified under the removal of city trees, that, um, the same posting language that's in chapter twelve be added to chapter fourteen. So that, um, it's, you know, neighbors are notified, it's posted on the website. That, um, also besides the posting that mitigation for removal of city trees be the same, two to one replacement ratio. And this will actually help when city trees come up in front of appeals. Because these, this ordinance will define what mitigation should be.
And you, Gail? I think we should probably talk about that point really quickly. Yeah. Okay, so I, I definitely agree about the noticing. I think the noticing should be the same across the board. Lisa, did you have a comment on that? I see her off.
Yes, I did. Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, in talking with City Attorney's Office, like part of the goal, I think, was not to kind of repeat things over and over. So, so, um, that language related to city trees actually is in, uh, section twelve talks about if, you know, city trees removed, you need to have the, you know, two to one replacement. Of course, we've always been doing the notification and, uh, would continue to do it. So I think part of, uh, a part of the reasoning, and I, and of course, um, City Attorney Kenyon could jump in here, but the, the goal is try to streamline it so everything's not repeated, but, uh, it does mention city trees under section twelve related to those elements.
Is it okay just to add the notification stuff in that section again?
Yeah, sure. We could do that in the replacements if you want.
Yeah, that'd be great. Consensus. Do you all agree with that? Is that okay with you?
They might not see it if they're not reading twelve.
Right. Yeah. I think that's all I have. And look, it's, does anyone else have anything else? Tiger? Anyone? Subalos?
No, I wasn't sure if Gail was going to say one more thing, uh, before we deliberated on that last point.
Gail, did you have one more thing?
Um, am I live?
Yes.
I am.
There are small things in our letter that we sent to the council that I think you've discussed all the big ones. And if we should be sending it to the consultant or to Christian or to someone else, the city attorney, please let us know, or maybe Lisa and Sam can share that with people. But we are very grateful for the study session and the ability to participate and, and advocate for these changes.
Thank you for all the work you have all done.
And I'm sure that Lisa will share with the city attorney. Right, Lisa?
She already has. I, we've been all over this. This has been shared with everybody. So Lisa does not have to resend anything. We, we've got it all. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we just take a couple minutes before we start our regular meeting for a bio?
Yeah.
Okay.
Come back in three, two.
Three. That acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Ramatoush Aloni people, who are the original habit inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Ramatoush Aloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As the indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Ramatoush Aloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as the caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their territory, in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatoush Aloni people. We will now salute the flag led by Mayor Protem Bigstein.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Okay, do we have a closed session report from six twenty-one, City Attorney? That's what it says on mine. So if I'm not supposed to ask that question, it's here.
Mayor Beer, I, I just wonder if City Attorney has not quite returned from the break period. So in the meantime, I can make a few announcements regarding tonight's meeting format.
Great, thank you.
This meeting is being held by, uh, video conference with no physical location open to the public pursuant to the provisions of Government Code Section five four nine five three, as amended by AB three sixty-one, which authorizes teleconference meetings under the Brown Act during certain proclaimed states of emergency. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone, the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV, channel twenty-six, or online at www.cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal pub- public comments can be made through Zoom. Use the star nine, uh, to raise your hand if you're dialing in or the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that item. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and uh, allow you to unmute after calling by screen name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Star six will allow you to unmute once called upon. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. Those comments received by twelve PM today for this meeting were provided to council members and posted on the city's website. The format of this meeting may be altered, or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at www dot city of Pacifica dot org for any updates.
Thank you, Sarah. City Manager Woodhouse.
Yeah, Mayor Beer, I was gonna go ahead and say that there was no reportable action from the six uh twenty-one closed session.
Okay, thank you very much. Tonight, we have a special presentation from the Pacifica Resource Center. We get our annual, annual report, which is so important to us. So we have Anita Reese with us. You can bring her up and we can get started with that. Anita, thank you so much for not only being here with us tonight, but for everything you do for our community. We really appreciate you a lot.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. So I'll go ahead and get started. Um, PRC has been around for nearly fifty years now, and during that time, we've continued to support the economic security of families and individuals in Pacifica. Um, and our ultimate vision is that everybody in Pacifica has all of the things that they need to thrive in this community. Next slide. So just in, over the last fiscal year, which our current fiscal year is ending as well, so I'll have updated information soon. Um, but in the last fiscal year, we served one in seven Pacifica families. Um, specifically, three hundred and one tons of groceries that helped twenty-five thousand Pacificans. This is duplicated. Uh, two hundred and fifty-five folks got help um staying sheltered, uh preventing homelessness of staying in their homes or um getting into shelter. And then we provided support um during the holidays for two hundred and thirty-four children and five hundred and fifty-six Pacificans overall. That included for Thanksgiving. Uh, and then a hundred and fifty-one folks, uh youth were helped with backpacks and um uh gift cards for school supplies. Given everything with COVID, we had to sort of streamline some things. Um, and then despite COVID, we still provided uh tax support for almost two hundred families that, which generated um three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in refunds that were more than likely re uh reinvested in the community. And then four hundred and sixty-one showers for folks who were unhoused uh through our shower program. Next slide. So just to give a little bit more context to some of our specific programs, grocery programs, as I mentioned, three hundred and one tons of groceries to folks. Um, groceries were provided by, by, through bimonthly drive-through and grocery deliveries, and then we had pantry appointments. Um, pantry visits by appointment. For our tax program, as I mentioned, uh, we were able to help generate three hundred and fifty-four thousand in refunds and also saved forty-six thousand in tax preparation fees for those folks. Um, a hundred percent of our tax preparation for the last fiscal year was by drop-off. And again, despite COVID, folks still saved thirty-one percent of the folks who had refunds. We were able to encourage to save in an interest-bearing account. So our focus is always providing immediate services and supports that are, you know, if folks are um in crisis, but our long-term the goal is to help folks um figure out ways to avoid those crises in the future, and savings is one of those ways. And then with the holiday program, as I mentioned, um continuing to provide that support, even though um it's not considered an economic, uh, it's not considered an emergency service, but it is one that helps increase people's economic security overall, because these are things that they don't need to do without. Um, their children and the families can have these resources and supports even um without having to not pay their rent or pay really important bills that keep them stable. Next slide. And then in terms of, one of the big things that I know I've mentioned it several times is, is folks uh had access to, to support through the state. Through housing is key. Um, but one of the things that we, we provided over this last year while we still pointed people to those services, we were available to support folks um in the application process. Um, and we saw the financial assistance increase over three hundred percent between pre-pandemic and since COVID had started. Um, we did a variety of things to try to make things easier for folks to access our services. Um, and like I said, pointed people the housing is key because they were able to have some additional um supports and protections from evictions. Next slide. And then in terms of our homeless services, one of the things I just wanted to remind folks about is that through coordinated entry, it's one of the ways that people um who are unhoused or are about to become unhoused have access to homeless services. So we are one of those points of entries for people who are in Pacifica. And so um one of the things that's really important is as folks get within the, it's not just being street homeless, it's also within three days of losing their housing. And so that helps people try to, to consider what options there are before they have to go into shelter. And so diversion is a really important component of coordinated entry. And then if they are not able to be diverted from, from shelter, then they're put on a waitlist. And for the most part, uh, one of the requirements, well, not one of the main requirements is that folks have to be in the county for at least thirty days, and folks who have children under the age of fives, for the most part, are prioritized into shelter. And so between the resources that are available and the county's um commitment to helping families stay housed, um, we've been able to help people continually get into shelter pretty quickly. Not because of anything that PRC is specifically doing other than referring them into coordinated entry, but the shift in the way that services are provided has been, uh, we've seen an increase in the number of people being able to get in quickly. Um, there's moments, especially during COVID, when there were outbreaks at different shelters. Um, things sort of shrunk for a period of time, but they're starting to open up again. And then the other piece around our homeless services is the Unhoused on the Coast Outreach Work. Um, the thing that I wanted to note is that since we started this work over the last, over this last year, we've been able to help nineteen unhoused people move into permanent housing. And currently, twelve of those unhoused folks are sheltered. Um, the other folks that we've been working with are in varying stages of becoming or returning to housing. Next slide. And then other services, just as a reminder, we do have baby and youth programs. So folks who need car seats, formula diapers, bus passes, um, they can come to PRC and we can provide that support. And then transportation, we have bus passes and tokens. Um, in some cases, we do car repairs, especially as it's resulted, as it impacts their ability to stay housed. And then other critical services, including laundry, clothing, a variety of other things. Um, basically, if somebody needs something that we don't provide, we can either um connect them to those resources or try to think creatively in how we can support them in other ways. Next slide. So just some additional kind of information about PRC in general, in terms of where we are right now and our future plans. We currently have nine board members. Our goal is to have fifteen. So we are recor- recruiting four to six additional members in twenty twenty-two. When fully staffed, we'll have fourteen staff that are thirteen point five full-time equivalents. We are still looking for um an unhoused on the coast outreach specialist and a case manager. So if anybody knows somebody who's interested in any of those positions, uh, current positions are on our website at packresourcecenter.org forward slash jobs. And then over the next year, our plan, uh, we are planning to start a new strategic planning process. So I'm, uh, I am excited to share. I will be excited to share our, the outcomes of that strategic plan next year, uh, when we do our annual report. And our homeless outreach work has been extended from Pacifica through Pescadero, starting in the next fiscal year, so starting as of July one. And then we are expanding our grocery rescue and delivery program. Um, we have gotten funding to add an, another refrigerated van and a driver. So our plans are to do a combination of uh distribution and deliveries. Uh, we see that as an opportunity to try to reduce stigma associated with folks having to come and ask for services. And our goal over the next six months to a year will be to create some sort of an app where folks can choose some of the items that they want so that it's more responsive to their needs. Um, so we're working on that. And then, of course, as you all know, the Sa- Pacifica Safe Parking Program is starting in two days. And so far, we have three folks confirmed, and we're working on adding some, some other people. So we're still in the process. We're learning that um, the closer we have gotten to implementation, um, the more things that we didn't know, we didn't know. So we're excited to start so that we can figure all those things out, and then it'll become more of a, a smooth process. Um, but I have a few more slides that go into a little bit more detail. Go ahead. Next slide, please. So just to talk about the grocery rescue and delivery pro, program expansion, part of that was, as part, uh, part of that was because of the SB thirteen eighty-three, which is being implemented. The city has already signed on to that. Pacifica Resource Center is one of those sites that is able to take um, the, the um redirect waste into the, that's still usable and uh provide it to folks who are, uh, who need the groceries. So we are, um, that was part of what I was sharing earlier about having those deliveries happening more regularly. So as soon as groceries get in, they go right back out into the community. And then we're also looking for partners who can uh take the additional food support that maybe we can't redirect to the families that live in Pacifica, since we are only doing deliveries to folks who live in Pacifica. Next slide. And then just a little bit more detail. I know you all have heard this before and seen it, obviously, in our operations agreement, but there are up to thirteen permitted parking sites that everybody who is in the program will have Housing Center and Case Management to develop a plan to return to housing. Um, really trying to make sure that folks have access to all of the services that we have available. And then, of course, we will be uh requiring folks to go through the coordinated entry system so that they can be included in um consideration for shelter and other vouchers if they're eligible. And then working with the city to have a mobile dump site for black and gray water, as well as um garbage and recycling. So those are all the components that are gonna be part of the, or are part of the program, um, which, as I shared, we will be implementing in two days. Next slide. I think that's it. Yeah. So then, for any more information, or if anybody's interested in getting some of these services, they can definitely reach out to us. It's six five zero seven three eight seven four seven zero. Specific questions or general questions can come to me or Marina, our direct services manager. And then that's the contact information for Unhoused on the Coast Outreach. If anybody comes across somebody who is unhoused and needs uh support, we can send somebody to them. They can come to the office. They can, you can email or call, and those are all of the, we'll have a second phone number eventually as well, as we bring on the other Unhoused on the Coast Outreach staff person. And then our safe parking program, our safe per, parking permit program coordinator is Catherine. She joined the team about a week and a half ago, and she's uh jumped in and started creating uh procedures, programs, reaching out to folks, getting them ready to go. Um, and we're very excited to have her. So that's another way that you can reach. Anybody regarding the safe parking program can go directly to Catherine um or me at any time, and that's her contact information as well. So that, thank you so much for your support in general. Um, and we're really excited about continuing our work together.
Thank you so much, Anita. Thank you so much. Do you have any questions, Anita from council or, or comments?
Mayor Beer?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry to jump in again. I, I um, thank you, Ms. Reese, for the update. All I wanted to ma- make sure is very clear regarding the safe parking permit program and the launch of that is that it will be limited to the eight spaces that have not been appealed in various forms for the initial launch until uh the appeal hearings are done for the, for the additional five spaces.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem.
Hi, Anita. Thank you for being here. Um, always good to see you. Uh, some of the um duplicated numbers, I think, can get confusing uh when you're not a part of the industry. So I, I really wanted to um focus in on that one in seven families were helped number, because I know that that's not duplicated. Um, and back when I was on the board, I think it looked more like one in ten, not one in seven. So um thank you so much for the extra work you are apparently have had to take on. And I see the um robust programs that were uh relatively newly developed also, and it's, it's just amazing to see um how PRC is growing to help uh what ultimately boils down to a Bay Area-wide crisis that naturally is going to affect us as we, we go along. So I, I don't know that I can encapsulate in words how grateful I am that you and PRC are in our community, but humbly I say thank you.
Thank you. And I will just add, um, while those are, you're absolutely right, that the um one in seven families is unduplicated. Um, one of the things that we've seen from between last year and this year uh is that the number of units of service that we've provided has more than tripled in this last year. Like, we don't have the numbers completely yet, right? But in looking at a partial year, where last year, for the whole year, it was somewhere around forty thousand, forty-two thousand units of service. Um, this year, it's already at a hundred and five thousand units. And so when you think about our relatively small staff, we've uh definitely um found ways to uh creatively support folks as, as quickly and as thoroughly as possible, which is sort of why we, you know, we've been able to provide more services um than you would sort of think. It's kind of, it's been interesting to see that over the last year.
Extraordinary. Thank you.
Anita, can you define a unit?
Sure. A unit would be like, um, I gave you, I gave a family of five groceries, so that would count as five units.
Got it.
Because it's for each person who's been touched. So that hundred, over a hundred thousand units of service is definitely duplicated, right? It, it, it kind of points to the breadth of the work that we do. And um, you know, when someone comes in for groceries, they don't leave with just groceries, right? We try to provide as much support as possible. Groceries is sort of our entry point a lot of times. Um, or something else is that housing is their entry point, and we make sure they're also connected to groceries and other services.
Thank you. Councilmember Vadalos.
Um, I just want to thank you so much for all that you do for people, and we really, like Tiger said, words can't express how much um, we really appreciate everything that you do, and as I'm sure the people who you help appreciate you too. And just thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Hi, thank you again, Anita, for everything that you do and your staff does in the community. Um, I, I always like to point out the opportunity that you provide for people who want to give and give back through the fundraising that you do, through the activities that you have, the fundraising events that you have. Um, through the opportunity to participate in holiday joy or to, to support the uh Thanksgiving programs that you do, the back-to-school programs. So I feel like there's always an opportunity for everyone at whatever level they wish to participate and, and to support the work of PRC. Um, I do have a question about, I know you're going into a, a strategic planning phase, but I heard you say that there's going to be an extension of services to Pescadero. And so I'm curious about that, number one. And number two, uh, either currently or through your um strategic planning process, will you be able to uh report out to the community the demographics of folks in terms of, for example, families, families with two children, families with children under the age of five? Um, v- single parents who have students in the Pacifica schools, you know, to try to build without and, you know, getting into personal information, obviously, but just a picture for the community of, of the types of folks that, a description of the folks that you're supporting.
Yes, um, so to your first question about Pescadero, um, it is actually only for Unhoused on the Coast Outreach Work that we are extending through Pescadero. Um, we had been doing that work through Half Moon Bay, and when the county um requested proposals uh for homeless outreach work in particular, the requirement was to do all of the coasts, not just Pacifica. Initially, when we got entered in, we only applied for Pacifica, and then they asked us to do through Half Moon Bay. So, you know, we went ahead and did that because it was sort of, you know, it's, it's our neighbor. Um, and then now they're asked, they, they've requested that we go as far down as Pescadero. So um, I imagine overall, the kind of, we will, the plan is to have one staff person, an, an house on the coast staff person, would cover um south of unhoused-on-the-coast staff person, would cover south of Pacifica through Pescadero. The need is less than in Pacifica, and for that reason, one person could cover that geographic area. And what we're looking for specifically is someone who speaks Spanish, just given the demographics in that area. So it is a different population, for sure. And, and what we'll do is we will connect anybody who's unhoused in those areas to the core agencies there, right? So we won't be providing service necessarily in Pacifica for them, although some of our case management will happen potentially here, although more than likely it'll be in the field. So the services at PRC will still be, you know, I would say ninety-five percent will still be in, for Pacifica residents. And then we'll be connecting folks to the other core agencies for the other types of services that we provide here. And then to your other point around the demographics, I'm happy to provide that. A lot of that information I can already share with the services that we provide. And so I'm happy to provide that information in the future. And then also, you know, some of the things maybe would take a little bit more, like figuring out how many single parents with a school-aged child. That's a little bit more than what we probably have the capacity to do, but can with the right sort of pulling of data. So happy to share that in the future, for sure.
I just think it helps people see their neighbors.
For sure.
Their peers. Maybe they themselves aren't in a position where they're presently needing services.
Right.
But to, to really be able to have an identification of like, oh, you mean like my kid's friends?
Right.
You know, and that kind of thing to, to put a different point of view.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. You know what I see about PRC is that, that you give people hope, right? When, when some people feel hopeless. And to have those connections and the services that provide dignity and hope naturally just lead to, to the next thing, the next right thing for that person. But without that, it's really hard to get anywhere. And so I really, really, really appreciate that about PRC. I appreciate all the services that PRC has provided for myself and my family, my friends. Yeah, it's forever, forever important to me and forever in my heart. And my relationship with you, Anita, is really important to me as well. So I appreciate not only your professional, everything that you do professionally, but personally, I really appreciate you too. So thank you for all of that. And thank you for being here with us tonight.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, Anita. Okay, council members.
Mayor Beer, I, I did note that there was, there was one hand raised from an attendee. So in, in the event, did you want to give any comment on?
Oh, I forgot.
Item?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. I forgot about that. Yeah, I will open up public comment for that item. Shame on me, sorry.
Madam Mayor, there's one hand raised at this time.
Okay.
Suzanne Moore. Suzanne Moore, you may now unmute yourself.
Oh, thank you. You're forgiven, Mary. I just, just express what the council has said. A real big thank you to Anita. And what I see, the Resource Center and its increased workload telling us, it's sort of like the canary in the mine. It is reminding us that we all, as a community, need as a whole to be watching out for each other. And especially with our housing element coming, we really want to strengthen that voice for our community. We want to provide a safe path to help those be permanently housed. We want to strengthen ways to prevent displacement. We want to prioritize ways to increase our low-income housing. And so, again, the work that the Resource Center is doing is just incredible. I'm, I'm very grateful. But we just have to remind ourselves that this is an economic recovery from COVID and that there are some in our community that are struggling more than others and to be aware of that and to do what we can. So thank you all tonight.
Thank you, Suzanne. Are there any other hands, Alyssa?
Madam Mayor, there are no more hands raised at this time.
I will close public comment, bring it back. Thank you, City Manager Woodhouse, for reminding me of that. We'll be moving on to the consent calendar. Are there any council members who wish to pull an item from consent tonight? Your hand is up, Councilmember Beckmeyer, just so you know. Okay, okay. All right, well, we can open up public comment for, or take a motion first.
No, public, public comment first.
Well, open up public comment. If there's anyone who would like to comment on any of the items on consent, you can do so now. Alyssa will help us do that.
Madam Mayor, there are currently two hands raised. The first hand raised is Tony Williams, followed by Christine Bolz. Tony, you may now unmute yourself.
Hi. Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. I'm currently actually hoping to get an opportunity to speak about an issue that we here at Seaweed Cannabis Dispensary in Rockaway are currently dealing with, with planning.
Hey, Tony. Tony, I'm going to interrupt you really quickly. We're in the section of the agenda where you're commenting on a consent item.
I'm commenting on a consent item?
Yeah, the consent items are from one through ten. And if you
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No worries. Regular pub oral, oral communication will be coming up.
Okay, I'm so sorry, Mayor.
So please raise your hand again during oral communications. We want to hear what you have to say.
Okay, thank you so much.
You bet.
Thank you, Tony. Christine Bolz, you may now unmute yourself.
Good evening, council and staff. This, this is Christine Bolz. I had a question about Consent Agenda, item three, the, the handrails on the pier. I was very surprised to read that GHD's estimate for the work was seven hundred and fifty thousand and that we only got one bid for three point two million, which is quite a big difference. And so I was, I was trying to look on the, the Public Works website where they have projects that are being bid. I, that's how I reviewed the construction drawings for the Civic Center a few months ago. And there was actually no information there. There, there were no drawings, no scope of work, no details about what was being bid. And I, I know originally GHD was just looking at replacing the railings on the end of the pier that sticks out at a ninety-degree angle, which were really damaged in the storm. And then there were some longer-term work that needed to be done. Other panels that were maybe not as urgent. So I'm, I'm just, just trying to understand how the, if the scope of work really changed or if construction prices are really that much different than what GHD estimated. So we can kind of understand what happened and, and, you know, better guide the process moving forward. And it just, it's a little scary, obviously, with the Sewell being a much bigger project that they've estimated. And just wanted to make sure that it's not an error on their part not really understanding costs here. So I, I would appreciate if staff could talk about that discrepancy, if you would allow it. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Madam Mayor, there are no more hands raised at this time.
Thank you. We will close public comment on the consent calendar and bring it back to council. If there's any questions or comments, Mayor Protem.
Sure. I thought it would be a helpful exercise to ask the question we just received. And maybe city staff can talk a little bit about the discrepancy on those numbers. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager, I'd be happy to, to initiate a response. You know, the item on consent is rejection of bids, as was noted. There was only one bid, and it was much more than the engineer's estimate. So it typically leads to that recommendation to reject the bids. I do know that staff is in the process of evaluating the potential reasons for why the one bid that was received was so high and also looking at our process for rebidding the project. And I see that Mr. Marquez, well, he was here, so maybe I covered it. Maybe he doesn't have anything more to add. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, you happy with that?
Good work. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions or comments about the consent items? And if not, can we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
On second.
Okay, we have a vote, please.
All right, start, or start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, big stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And the consent calendar passes with a vote of four to zero with Councilmember O'Neil absent.
Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications, provided, however, that during oral communication, portions of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meaning may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member, not to any individual member. You'll have three minutes to share a comment tonight, and be respectful and kind. And we can go ahead and get started. And Tony, this is where you want to raise your hand again, so we can hear from you.
Correct. Madam Mayor, there is one hand raised. Tony Williams. Tony, you may now mute yourself to speak.
Thank you so much, Mayor Beer, and good evening, council members. I wanted to speak in reference to an issue that we're dealing with here at Seaweed Holistics in Rockaway. Currently, we have an issue that we're dealing with, with planning. And part of that is that the city, the city's local cannabis ordinance has said most dispensary storefronts must have a glass front of about sixty by sixty percent by forty percent glass for security so that the police can look from the outside into the store. And unfortunately, our storefront is only fifty-five percent by forty percent. And we've been trying to deal with this issue since we've opened. And we've went to our landlord, Mr. Greenrod, who was also the San Mateo County Building Inspector. And he actually built the plaza that we're in currently. And we found out that trying to expand a window currently would compromise the structure of the front of the building. And with that said, basically, the expansion of the window can't physically be done without structural changes to the building as a whole. So what we'd like to do is ask the city council if they could potentially waive the current ordinance for us. And that also, too, with that security measure, what we've done is provide the police with twenty-four-hour access to our current camera system, which covers the entire store. So it gives them, they can actually sit right outside the store and look at the entire store at any time. So they do have access to kind of offset the difference from the window. But we'd all really like to request the council to consider waiving this and also the fine that planning is giving us also to go with that. So, and with that said, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tony, for bringing that to us.
Madam Mayor, there are no more hands raised at this time.
Okay, then I'm going to close oral communications and bring it back to council for council communications. Who would like to begin? Sue Vatalas.
I went to a lot of events, but really, I'm going to change what I have to say today. We had an all-day meeting on Saturday, and I want to let everybody know that we all sit here because we care about Pacifica, not so that we can spend our whole day in a meeting and get berated by the public. I'm still disappointed in some of the behavior of some of the people that happened during that meeting. We don't do this for our own good. We do it for all of you. And I just wanted to be clear on that. And I would appreciate then when people get up to speak, they don't try to just beat us up because it's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vatalas. Who would like to go next?
Seeing as how Councilmember Beckmeyer is not racing to the unmute button.
Go ahead.
I mean, I, I'll follow on with that with just something I heard at Cal Cities last year, which really stuck with me, was a phrase recommended that I cannot hear you when you are yelling at me. And, you know, at any given point in time, some of us are able to hear through loudness better than others. But generally speaking, even if I am good at hearing through it, I definitely hear it better when I don't have to hear through it. So I'll just add that to that. I really wanted to begin, though, with, as I always do, saying my heart is with Ukraine and just still watching a war go on, and it's still heartbreaking. On the fifteenth, I attended the emergency preparedness meeting. Our senior planner, Bonnie O'Connor, gave us an update on Maury Point. The, the commission is getting excited about putting a tent up at Fog Fest and giving the community information about preparedness. And the next meeting is on the twentieth of July. It was also pointed out at the meeting that Connect with Pacifica often has a lot of good information about things going on in terms of emergency preparedness. So if you're not connected with that newsletter, I strongly recommend it. I got to be the delegate at the A-BAG General Assembly Conference and Business Meeting. And it was really strongly all about housing. They discussed the Bay Area Housing Financial Authority, potentially putting a one billion dollar measure on a future ballot. Not this one, but they're, they're thinking in terms of getting together over a billion dollars to try and help housing for preservation and protection as well as production. So they discussed whether or not that's a good idea and how best to go about it. They were talking about looking closely at how the regional housing needs allocation numbers arena were allocated and how they need to maybe reassess how they distribute those numbers for the next cycle. And given how large our numbers were, I was listening attentively as they made such a recommendation. I had sent a, a letter to city staff yesterday, but I couldn't quite place where I'd heard it because Mayor Beer brought up on Saturday the notion that maybe we could bump our inclusionary ordinance up to twenty percent. And then, as I was doing my study yesterday, I was like, oh, I heard something somewhere. And as I was sifting through my notes, it came from John Dugan of San Carlos, who was speaking at the A-BAG meeting in terms of deed-restricted housing, instead of it being capped at forty-five or fifty-five years going on in perpetuity, rather than having an end date. So I wrote a letter to staff about when the best time to have that discussion would be, which might be during housing element and certainly will be during goal-setting if not. And just in general, it was a really good, robust housing discussion for several hours. I attended the city Democrats meeting where Tom Piccolotti, our Director of North Coast County Water District, was speaking. We can expect an eleven percent water reduction. So whatever we can do to conserve water, we are not getting much rain. I learned a lot about desalinization, and it seemed to be an area where he was particularly interested about its potential as a solution. about its potential as a solution. And I also learned something about the Purple Pipe Recycled Water Program and how you can go to North Coast County Water District Building and get some water to take home for your flowers or what have you. So check in with North Coast County to find out more. I tuned into both the Planning Commission meetings that happened this week on the Sharp Park specific plan. The Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting was going on during the Thursday meeting. So I'm still going to play catch-up for about two hours of that meeting, but hopefully I have a little time to do that over the next week. At the Peninsula Clean Energy Meeting, the thing that was so there was an RFP that went out for the fifteen public photovoltaic projects, which includes ours. So that's the solar project on our Civic Center Building. They just put out the RFP for that, so hopefully that'll be approved soon. And we'll get solar power for a city building. And we approved the budget, and we made sure that our energy rates, which shift on the first of July, will remain five percent under that which PG&E offers. And we got to receive a reach code update, so that tells me we'll be having a reach code discussion in the not-too-distant future. They should be releasing those updates soon. Got to attend that meeting on Saturday. Yesterday, I had the honor of attending the, what they call Constitution Sunday, which they put on every year, the Sunday before Fourth of July at Holy Cross Lutheran. I don't often attend church, but in this instance, I was compelled. Quentin Elcop spoke, and in absence of our Captain Glasgow, I believe, I was asked to read the Gettysburg Address, which gave me the opportunity to meditate for a moment on a lot of the very interesting, and I'm being polite, energy we're seeing in the country lately. What I boiled it down to was, it occurs to me that freedom has something to do with protecting each other's rights. And when we are in the practice of protecting each other's rights, generally speaking, we do not then need to work as hard to protect what we think our rights are. It boils down to common respect, and that seems lacking in national discourse lately. So every opportunity to remind myself of that is welcome. And then I got to enjoy a free concert in Sturgeon Grove on Pride Day. And today, I went to the One Shore, or I got to watch the One Shoreline meeting. They passed their budget. It's budget season for everyone. And last but not least, I forgot to mention last meeting, I was talking about how I've been meeting a couple of times with Jeremy, who's the VP of the Fire Union. They asked me to give a shout out to the folks on Galvez, who kind of banded together as a neighborhood when there was a fire going on at our Pride Day on the Fourth of June. And just the neighbors were outside, and they were able to assist in the logistics of the Fire Department while they were putting out a fire, and it was a beautiful community moment, apparently. And the Fire Department asked me to shout out to Galvez for being present in that moment. That's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Beth Meyer?
I won't restate much about the things that Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Protem, Big Stick and I attended together. But I will say about Independence Celebration yesterday, that Mayor Protem did not read the Gettysburg Address. He delivered it, and it was amazing. And especially how I learned he came to be informed or asked to please step in and do that five minutes before he was about to do it. I mean, it was just impressive. Really, really nicely done. Thank you. And our mayor read the Declaration of Independence. Yes? Yeah, and I mean, actually, not every single part, but the four parts and a lot. And it was just very well done, and so you can be proud of that. I was certainly proud and enjoyed the day so much. I mean, it really was just fantastic. One of the most interesting, you know, I know that Reverend Nibby likes jazz, right? And so he's always has jazz musicians there, but being that jazz is such a unique American art form, it's just so fitting. So it was just a really great day. Enjoyed that a lot. And then with regard to the North Coast County Water District presentation at the Democrats' meeting, Chair Piccolotti was there, the chair of their board, and gave a great overview of some different capital projects and things that they're doing. And so I really thought, and the mayor made some great points about opportunities for communicating and collaborating. And I thought it might be nice in the future, if we have an opportunity, City Manager, to invite them to come and have a presentation at council or for us to have a joint meeting of some kind to sort of just hear about the projects that are going on in our own city and become more informed and, you know, we could share information. I don't know how it could work, but I would just love to propose that. I attended a subcommittee meeting with Cosmot, which is the company that's working on our Economic Opportunity Study. I attended a meeting with Councilmember O'Neil and staff and consultants. Kind of a preparation kickoff, if you will, looking at stakeholders and getting ready for that project to launch. So there'll be information going out about that very soon. And I had a special study meeting with a citizen who's been helping me go over things involved in the Resource Management and Climate Protection Committee. He attends the meetings regularly, and so we sat down and had a study group going over a meeting I missed when I was on my trip. And it was really great, and I appreciated his time for that, and the focus was reach codes. And so I am working to educate myself, as I've mentioned many times. I know we are going to be having a presentation from Peninsula Clean Energy soon, but I don't know when. So I'll be, actually, I have another meeting on that topic tomorrow with another citizen. So working on being as prepared as I can be for deliberation and discussion on reach codes. And I think that's it. I have family in town right now. So working, you know, the Saturday meeting around my mom and my son being here and all of that. It's, I didn't do much else. That meeting Saturday was quite a significant investment of time, and I really want to commend Mayor on running a great meeting. Great job. I thought it was masterful, getting through our agenda, getting through, I mean, not the full agenda, but getting through the process of going over the general plan and really having an opportunity to ask questions and understand the recommendations from the Planning Commission. Was an excellent approach and a good use of time, even though it was long. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that a lot. I also really enjoyed my time at Holy Cross yesterday with Pastor Nibby. And I got to tell you, meeting Quentin Cop was just like, I was just kind of like blown away by the man. He's like ninety-three, and he got up there and he didn't pull any punches. And yeah, it was really, really cool to be there and just the whole experience. So thank you to Pastor Tom. Thank you so much for doing that for our city. I also watched the Planning Commission meetings in preparation for our general plan meeting on Saturday. You know, I think that's the majority of my time the past couple of weeks has been preparing for that. We all know how many documents there were and pages and sections, and so a lot of my time was spent there. Let's see, I went to the Pacifica School Volunteers' Meeting. Oh, I also got to attend the Eagle Scouts Ceremony last Sunday, which was really wonderful. There's three sets of siblings. Three sets of siblings. And it was just, I was just so, it made me emotional, being there, listening to them and their process and how much they care about how they present themselves in the world and how they help our community. It was really touching, and I'm glad that I went because I went directly from the Eagle Scouts Meeting to the United Against Hate Meeting with our Congresswoman's fear. And our colleague, Councilmember Fung, was there and spoke about what happened to him. And there were people there that talked about the resources in the county, and Kevin Mullen spoke. And it was really amazing to be there. That was also, it's sad, right? It's sad and it's frustrating. And just the day before that, I had heard about the flag burning at Sunset Ridge, one of our pride flags. And, you know, we had such a beautiful pride celebration. And so to hear about the flag burning and then go to the meeting that the Congresswoman held, it just kind of all blended together. It was really heavy and emotional. And then we had the rulings against Roe versus Wade. I mean, everything is just so heavy. So we're having a unity event in response to the flag burning. So it's, we're collaborating with Coast Pride and Pacifica School District. We will be at Sunset Ridge Elementary School tomorrow from five to six. We have a giant lineup of folks that are just going to come and share two or three minutes each. We will have the Pacifica Library there with a pop-up library with different kinds of books and literature. There will be face painting and some goodies. So it really is just to show folks that no matter what, we are standing together in solidarity and that it's about love. It's about love. That's it. And so I really appreciate having the opportunity to respond in a way like that. We could not do any of this without Coast Pride. We, I've learned so much from them in the past month and a half, two months. I really appreciate everything they're doing for us, so. That's about it for me, and we will hand it over to City Manager Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beer and Mayor Protem Big Stick, Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. Sticking with the unity event theme that the mayor just talked about, I just wanted to say that years ago, Pacifica joined the Stands United Against Hate Campaign, and we had created these posters. And I will be at the unity event with a stack of these to hand them out to anyone who's interested and wants to put them in their business, in their residence, or what have you. So I just wanted to mention that and look forward to that event. The other update that I have is, and I wrote about this in Connect with Pacifica, is to announce that Fox Two KTVU will be featuring Pacifica on July twenty-ninth in their Zip Trips program, which they've relaunched post-COVID. And that's a very exciting opportunity for Pacifica. They'll come to town, do an hour-long live broadcast. This is on Friday, July twenty-ninth. But what I wanted to mention for the listening audience is that they are currently conducting a survey so that community members can give input into, you know, what are the hidden gems and special places in Pacifica? So they want to hear from everyone. And if, I don't have the actual website link to recite off, but if one were to Google Zip Trip Pacifica Survey twenty-twenty-two, it comes up right at the top. So you can key in on that survey and tell them where your favorite coffee place is and favorite restaurant, favorite hike, et cetera. So I wanted to promote that definitely. And finally, I just announced that, given how busy we are, and I don't have as much of an opportunity to do one thing I really love to do, which is leadership development. This Wednesday morning, I will be on a panel of city managers presenting, talking with the San Mateo County Leadership Consortium for their Public Sector Leadership Program. And all the cities in San Mateo County typically have employees that participate in this consortium. So just to say, I'm really excited. It's really energizing to go and talk to our future leaders and looking forward to that, carving out that time Wednesday morning. That completes my communications.
Is this the last meeting that we'll have Tuesday?
Yes, this is Chief Stidle's last city council meeting, actually, with Pacifica.
Well, in that case, maybe we should tell him how much we appreciate him.
And to that point, you know, typically for retiring employees of long tenure like Chief Stidle, the council does do proclamations. We, given the timeline related to this one, we didn't have that scheduled for tonight's meeting, but we do plan to schedule that for a future city council meeting. But I'm sure the chief, you know, would probably, if the council wanted to now, you know, he'd probably be pleased to come on and receive any comments, as long as they're positive, I suppose.
I just, I'm so sad. So I just realized, I'm like, oh, no, this is your last meeting. Chief, you've done so much, done so much for all of us for so long, that I can't express how grateful I am for you, for all you've done for our city and how wonderful you've been supportive of our prevention work all this time and how much I learned from you through that. And I'm just not going to cry right now, so I'm going to turn it over to my other council members, but just know that you are loved.
I'm really going to miss you too. Your sense of humor is amazing. I can't talk about this either, but I'm really going to miss you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for everything you've done for Pacifica.
I just want to thank you. I've commented on it before, and I, every chance I get, I appreciate the kind of family atmosphere that you've created in PPD and the standards that you have set. Because I think that that's something that persists while you're leaving. And, you know, staff come and staff go. Having a culture that is embedded is really what carries forward, and that is your legacy. So thank you.
Yeah, you know, the idea of finding somebody whom is going to be able to give the respect and thought and care to our community that you have risen to, I just, I'm confident we'll find someone, but I don't know how that's going to happen. You have presided over a time in which it is very difficult, coming from the remnants of a tragedy in town and making sure that we're able to address mental health, to dealing with a national conversation that brings people out who vary between having legitimate concerns about their own community, but who are also coming from a great deal of fears stemming from a national issue that they want to be able to address in their own community and navigating that and making sure that through it, our community is addressed. And ultimately, you know, the first time I ever really clued into who you were, and I don't remember what the topic was, but you were the one who brought up the spirit of the law. And I've been able to revisit that with you because you are a man whom goes to the spirit of the law over a sense of rigidity when it comes to the law, to the detriment of our community. And it is because you always keep in mind that spirit with which our officers are supposed to serve, that you have been invaluable, that you are certainly sincerely loved by this council and irreplaceable. And, you know, again, I come to a place where expressing gratitude falls short of the words I am capable. And, you know, again, I come to a place where expressing gratitude falls short of the words I am capable of, save for another humble, "Thank you."
Unfortunately, we can't hear you. It would be wonderful if we could, but we just can't. So it's okay. You heard us. We'll see you before you go. Okay. And also, don't forget about Fourth of July, everyone. Please be safe, Fourth of July. We're gonna have a lot of fun at Frontland Park. So we'll be back. That's awesome.
And no illegal fireworks.
No. No, of course not. So we have a public hearing coming up. Do we need a small break or should we just go ahead and go right in? We'll go right in. I suppose I see no one else. Okay. So tonight, we have a consideration of appeal, the Planning Commission's approval of site development permit, PSD 811-16, which we know as 540 Crespi Drive. We have Acting Planning Director Murdock here with us tonight to open us up. And I appreciate that. So Christian, take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Honorable Councilmembers. Good evening. Acting Planning Director Christian Murdock. Next slide. Tonight, we're here to discuss the 570 Crespi Development Project. It's known by that title, but it actually includes portions of the 540 Crespi Drive parcel, which is the city's community center property. And so the diagram on your screen right now reflects the combined nature of the proposed project site. Next slide. Here are two graphics showing perspective renderings to give you a sense of the type of development and the scale. You'll see in the front of the top rendering, there's a mixed-use building with ground floor commercial and upper floor flats comprised of three units horizontally oriented. And then towards the rear of that, you'll see two different buildings containing three-story townhomes, town home style residential units for a total of 19 units on the project site. And then you'll see sort of on the bottom rendering that the development is concentrated roughly on the front half of the project site with no significant development on the rear half of the site. Next slide. This is a mixed-use project consisting of a little over 3,000 square feet of commercial floor area, again, on the ground floor of that front building, oriented closest to Crespi Drive. And then a total of 19 dwelling units, again, split amongst three flats above the commercial unit in the front of the site. And then 16 townhomes split across two buildings at the rear of the site. And of the 19 units on site, three would be below market rate units available for purchase at an affordable price. Two of those to persons of low income and one of those units to a person of moderate income. And then an additional affordable housing cash payment negotiated as part of the development agreement for the project. And then there would be a condominium subdivision, again, to provide ownership opportunities to sell those residential units that would be created. The project would include a freestanding sign to identify the development site, onsite interpretive signage that was negotiated as part of the development agreement, and also negotiated as part of the development agreement, community center parking, circulation, and landscaping improvements, generally at the front of the community center property. I think the, the development permits for the project, which will be summarized on the next screen, next slide please, are pretty self-explanatory and I think more usual for the council in the course of their approval of development projects. But there are four legislative items that I just want to touch on briefly because they are somewhat unique and sort of project-specific. The first is the development agreement that I mentioned, and it consists of public and developer benefits. And then general plan amendment for commercial land use designation change, allowing horizontal mixed use instead of vertical. Zoning text amendment to make conforming changes to the zoning to allow the same type of project. And then a rezoning of the site to the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. There are required actions of the council summarized on the screen. Next slide, please. Those being resolution of an appeal that was filed subsequent to the Planning Commission's action on this project. Actions related to the SEQA document, including adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Legislative items that I summarized and then development permits, including site development permit, just permit tentative subdivision map, and so on. The appeal that was filed following the Planning Commission's action to recommend city council approval of the project had four bases. These are detailed in the staff report summarized, next slide, summarized on the, on the screen. They cover the city's actions related to SEQA, claimed violations of the municipal code, claimed violations of the general plan, and a general claim that the general plan is fatally flawed and internally inconsistent. Next slide. As it pertains to the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, the city has prepared an initial study mitigated negative declaration or ISMD. There are no, no public agents, no public or agency comments submitted during the public comment period on that document. But last Friday afternoon, the appellant, in relation to the appeal, submitted new information related to the SEQA document as well as related to the appeal file. And so as a result of that, the staff's recommendation is different now than it was upon publication of the agenda packet. Next slide, please. And so staff now recommends continuing this public hearing to a future date so that staff can more carefully review the new information submitted by the appellant. And so we would not recommend that the city council enter into a substantive discussion on the appeal tonight and instead take public comment as necessary, limited to the nature of the continuance that's now proposed by staff. And then to actually hear this appeal hearing at a future date to be determined with all public notices provided again in advance of that, that hearing date. Thank you.
And Mayor Beer, if I could add to Mr. Murdoch's presentation, and thank you for that. I just wanted to mention that regarding staff's changed recommendation tonight, Mr. Murdoch did reach out and speak directly with both the appellant and the applicant.
So I think we needed a general consensus. Yes, Michelle?
Oh, no, you, I'm sorry. You, I thought you needed me, but clearly you don't. So keep going.
So, yeah, we need a general consensus from council that that is the direction we'll go in before we go with the rest of the.
And, and if I could just add, the, the reason for that is, you know, given the strong staff recommendation to continue this hearing, and if the council agrees with that recommendation, what I would recommend to the mayor, should there be a consensus to continue, that the mayor opened the public comment period and provide the public, you know, with their opportunity to speak. But also, we, since the topic of discussion, if it's a majority of the consensus of the council, to continue, that you ask the commentators to stick their comment, to keep their comments to the issue of the continuance rather than getting into the substance, since it will be clear after the consensus of the council may not be considering the appeal tonight.
Hey, I do believe that we have a consensus to do so. I just want to make sure that I am super clear about how this is going to move forward because I know last time it was difficult for us. And so, Christian, I want to make sure that the appellant is, is super clear about everything. And if not, then we can take the time to make sure she is.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke with the appellant, as City Manager Woodhouse mentioned this afternoon. And it's my impression that she understands and acknowledges the reason for the continuance, but had intended to make a brief remark during the time afforded to the appellant.
Okay, good. Great. Thank you so much. All right, then we will open up public comment for this item. And so please keep your public comment only to the topic of the discussion of the continuance of the item and do not get into the substance of the appeal. I thank you for that. And we'll go ahead. Alyssa, do we have any hands tonight?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are currently two hands raised. The first speaker is going to be Leo Leon, followed by Suzanne Moore. Leo, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. Leo Leon, Pacifica, I just wanted to comment within the confines of what's allowed tonight that I fully support this continuance. Given the information that's come forward, I think that there is good reason that staff made such a recommendation. And so there will be ample time to pursue the details that were outlined by the city attorney. And we'll certainly be getting into those as we go forward. So not to prolong my comments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And once again, I strongly urge and support the continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo.
Thank you, Leo. The next speaker is Suzanne Moore, followed by Margaret Cudell. Suzanne, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Good evening, City Council and staff. And I hope, like Leo, that I'm not overstepping what I'm not supposed to say. But I just feel like this is such an exciting potential for these parcels at 540, 570 to create low-income housing. And that's desperately needed in our community. And in April of 2017, council unanimously passed a resolution, number 20-2017, to comply with the Terms of Surplus Land Act. And the purpose of the act is to increase the amount of land available for low-income housing. And that public lands can play a critical role in increasing the supply of land for affordable housing. And I just want to remind us all the city is responsible for certain steps when selling its land. And it would be great if we could clarify if those steps have all been taken. And to just remind us all that public land best be used for the greatest public good. And we should perhaps seek ways to really expand the opportunity for low-income housing there. We could create a win-win situation, a plan for a maximum number of low-income units, as well as a plan that protects historic wetlands. And I'm so glad that the city council is moving to continue the appeal hearing and hope that we can try our best to create low-income housing on these sites. And I support low-market rate housing for essential workers, neighbors on fixed income, including our disabled. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa, Margaret is our appellant. So is there anyone else with their hands raised?
Yes, Cliff Lawrence. Cliff, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Cliff Lawrence here. Good evening. I also support the continu-
Cliff, I'm afraid you've got, you muted. So if you could stop the timer, please. Try to get him back.
Okay, am I unmuted finally?
You're good now.
Hey, this is Cliff Lawrence. Thank you. Good evening to you all. I also support the continuance. Up late, we've been forced into rushing through a lot of things. And I, I really feel it is appropriate to take the time to look at this more closely and give people the time necessary to get this right. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I believe that the account for Margaret will be her partner speaking, Stan Vivian.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Stan, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Now, sometimes there's a delay. So Stan, if you would like to unmute yourself, we would love to hear from you.
This is not Stan.
Oh, okay. Well, then we're gonna wait.
To the issue, not to this issue.
Okay, so.
So, Madam Mayor, we, we should probably ask the city clerk to move the appellant up as a panelist because she does get 15 minutes, as would the applicant, should they want to speak. And so at the time that the appellant does want to speak, she should be moved up to a panelist.
And, and just to clarify, the duration is 10 minutes.
10 minutes.
Correct.
Okay, is there anyone else for public comment on this item?
Madam Mayor, there is one more hand raised by Stuart Wilt. Stuart, you may now unmute yourself to speak.
Ms. Bronte, Mr. Wilt is part of the applicant team.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone who participated in public comments. Now we're going to invite the appellant to speak. Margaret, you still have, you have 10 minutes. If you'd like to reserve, I don't know if there's gonna be a rebuttal. Margaret, it's now time for you to speak if you would like to do so.
Okay, I am unmuted.
You are.
Yes.
Hello, Margaret.
Okay. I support the continuance, especially given the recent court decision last week that came in. Getting us in compliance with SEQA is a very important thing here. That court decision said, "The foremost principle under SEQA is that the legislature intended the act to be interpreted in such a manner as to afford the fullest possible protection to the environment within the reasonable scope of the statutory language. With narrow exceptions, SEQA requires an EIR whenever a public agency proposes to approve or carry out a project that may have a significant effect on the environment." So folks, don't wait for another court case. Get an EIR. Use this time profitably. Stop pussyfooting around. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, you are unmute.
Thank you. Okay. So we're not asking questions tonight, correct? Go, tell me, you can answer me, to Madam Mayor, somebody.
I think the applicant needs to speak.
Madam Mayor, we need to ask the applicant if, if they would like to speak.
I was just going down my little list here, and so the questions came next, but I wasn't sure because, anyway. The applicant, if the applicant, if the applicant would like to speak, we'd love to hear from you. About 10 minutes. And I believe that is Mr. Wilt.
Yeah. Good evening, council members and honorable Madam Mayor. I am Stuart Wilt. I'm one of the architects for Environmental Innovations in Design. And Mark Omack, another architect in our office, is here as well this evening. But I don't think he'll need to speak in respect for the process and continuation. We're happy to use the time between now and the next available agenda item, next agenda schedule item for us to speak further with the appellant, Ms. Cudell and her biologist. We have involved, as you know, two biologists hired by the applicant, as well as then the SEQA team who reviewed those reports and studies and the subcontracting biologist utilized by the SEQA consultant. So there's been many biologists involved in the project. And we've always had from day one, the effort, huge effort to allow the, a large portion of the site, almost 50%, full 50% of the site, to be allowed to remain as-is. And we've worked very hard to provide a project, bring a project to the city that does bring affordable housing, also contribution to the affordable housing program. And as I say, 50% of the site untouched and unmitigated. So really, this is a, this is a perfect example. So really, this is a, this is a perfect example. We feel, you know, when we bring it, as we speak with the neighborhood and the appellate and the folks involved, and as we present it at the next, an upcoming agenda schedule, I think you'll see that, you know, perhaps this could be an example of how everyone can kind of live together. You know, the wetlands, the affordable housing for all sorts of demographics and size. There's a huge range of unit sizes and very well integrated into the existing fabric of the crespy and Pacifica area. So thank you for your time to schedule us this evening. And thank you for continuous. We'll look forward to seeing all of you at the appropriate time. And meanwhile, we will reach out to Ms. Goodell to see if we can find a time to meet with her group or herself and speak about the project further in the meantime. Thanks again, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight. Okay, we'll bring it back to council and close the public hearing. Is that right, Michelle?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. Close the public hearing and then I believe we need a motion.
I move to continue to, uh, date to be determined.
Second.
Wilt, please.
Okay, the motion by Mayor Protem Big Stick and seconded by Councilmember Votarlas. Start the roll call vote, Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that motion passes four to zero with Councilmember O'Neil absent.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to our next agenda items. Agenda item number 12, a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the annual report from the Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District as modified by City Council. Tonight, we have Yulia Carter with us to present the PowerPoint and information. Hello, Yulia, it's nice to see you, Assistant City Manager Carter.
Good to see you too. Thank you. And Madam Mayor and City Council, today we are continuing our discussion on Pacifica Hotel Business Improvement District. And we are asking you to hold a public hearing tonight to continue the BID program and levy assessment for the fiscal year 2022, 2023 at the same rate as fiscal year 2021, 2022, at $1 per night per hour without change. Next slide. So as you, as you remember, the, this is again continuing discussion of the, of the items, so recommendations before your hearing. We ask you to hold the public hearing rule any oral and written protests. And at the end of the public hearing, we want you to adopt a resolution approving the BID annual report as amended by City Council at the last meeting on June 13, 2022. And we are asking you to continue the same assessment levy for the upcoming 2022, 2023 fiscal year, excuse me. Next slide. So at the last meeting, you may remember you discussed the plans, the notifications to the BID annual report that was prepared by the Chamber of Commerce as the BID managing agency. We listed you amended recommendations here. There are three of them. They also presented in the attached, the attachment two as the red line hobby. So we made all these changes and we are asking you to, again, hold the public hearing and levy the assessment. And as per your recommendation from the last meeting, in the next six months, we intend to build greater collaboration and coordination of efforts between the chamber and the BID to align our marketing efforts towards the same goals of promoting Pacifica as an overnight destination and improve occupancy rates for the hotels in the, in the district. And we will be bringing you the mid-year report, the progress report. And at that time, in about six months' mark, we will be asking for any additional traction from you depending what we will have to report at that time. So with that, we can probably go back to the previous slide. You mentioned that action in front of you today is a resolution to levy the assessment. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Council, does anyone have any questions before we put a public comment? Seeing none, we can open up public comment on this item.
Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised at this time.
All right, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back for council deliberation.
I move that we approve the BID as amended.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. Or we just need formal confirmation from the clerk that there are no protests? Or I'm sorry, Ms. Carter, or the clerk?
Councilmembers, I'm not aware of any protests that have been received. I'd like to confirm with Assistant City Manager Carter.
I'm not aware of any protest recently.
Thank you. Sue, go ahead.
I remove, sorry, I move that we approve the BID as presented.
Sorry.
Yeah, roll call vote, please.
Okay, with the motion by Councilmember Votarlas and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer, I'll start the roll call vote with Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Votarlas.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that motion passes four to zero with Councilmember O'Neil absent.
Thank you so much, Assistant City Manager Carter. We are going to take a five-minute break now. We'll be back.
And the council has had numerous meetings related to Vision 2025, specific to evaluation of potential revenue measures. That really began in February, at February 14th council meeting, where the city presented our 10-year revenue and expenditure forecast. And in that forecast is a significant projected structural budget deficit beginning in 2023, 24 fiscal year. And that deficit increases from 2.7 million in that year to a projected $3 million structural deficit in 2930. And one, a couple of points I want to mention about that structural deficit forecast. Number one, this year's budget, which the council will consider after this item, is really balanced in large part because of the availability of American Rescue Plan Act dollars to help us bridge this, this difficult financial situation post-COVID and help with economic recovery. But once the ARPA funds run out, we are faced with this structural deficit. The other point that I want to make about the structural deficit is really call attention to the difference between one-time capital funds and ongoing operating revenue that the city annually needs just to maintain existing levels of services. So the two buckets of types of funding are often confused. Comments such as, you know, how can the city afford to do such-and-such infrastructure project or renovate the civic center due to those public health concerns, et cetera? But yet is potentially asking voters to vote on a, on a revenue measure to balance their operating revenue? Well, it's because capital dollars are one-time dollars and come from a variety of sources. But a revenue measure such as the council is considering tonight is an annual ongoing source for operating revenue. So the council at that February 14th meeting directed staff to really look at and study three different voter-approved revenue options. The, an increase to the transient occupancy tax, otherwise known as the hotel tax, a half-cent transactions and use tax, which is a version of sales tax, and an increase or change to the restructuring of the utility users tax. So we went and conducted public opinion research, came back to council at the May 23rd meeting, presented the results of that opinion research. And at that point, the council directed us to prepare the necessary documents for consideration of this half-cent transaction and use tax to be placed on the November 8th, 2022 ballot. Next slide, please. So tonight during this presentation, Mr. Mora and Ms. Carter will run us through more background information about the local transaction and use tax and discuss some of the requirements related to that tax, such as tonight's vote requires a two-thirds majority vote by the council, which means four council members to vote in the affirmative in order to place it on the ballot. And that if it is placed on the ballot and when it's voted on in November 8th, that that measure, that type of general tax measure requires a 50% plus one of voters in order to pass. And at this point, I'll turn it over to either Ms. Carter or Mr. Mora.
All right, next slide, please. All right, next slide. This is a kind of an overview of the transaction and use tax. And as City Manager Woodhouse indicated, it is a, it's similar to, and it's related to the sales tax. Currently, the city of Pacifica receives 1% the so-called local Bradley Burn sales tax, which is based on the place of sale. And it generates approximately $2.6 million per year in general fund revenues for the city. In California, cities and counties can also levy a local transaction and use tax. This tax, as City Manager Woodhouse indicated, is implemented through a voter-approved ballot measure. Of the 482 cities in California, 259, roughly 53%, have now levied one of these taxes through January of 2020. So it's a majority of the cities in California now have one of these. There are also 62 county-wide transaction and use taxes in effect at the same period, the January 2020. If the city of Pacifica decides to place this measure on the ballot and the voters approve it, the half-cent transaction and use tax in Pacifica would be based on where goods are delivered, as opposed to the place of sale. And it would also generate approximately $2.6 million per year in general fund revenues. Next slide, please. This is a update of a TUT sales tax comparison in San Mateo County. You'll notice that there are six cities in San Mateo County that have a half-cent sales tax and two more that have a quarter-cent sales tax. So there are eight cities now of the 20 that have a tax of this type. And the first one was implemented in 2010 by the city of San Mateo. And the most recent one was implemented by the city of Daly City and went into effect in 2021. Next slide. This is the proposed ballot measure that would go on the ballot if it is adopted by the city council. The voters would be presented with the following ballot question. And it says, shall the measure establishing a half-cent sales tax for general government use to maintain the city of Pacifica's vital services, such as police, fire, medical 911 emergency response, keeping pollution and trash off beaches, attracting, retaining jobs and businesses, street paving, storm maintenance to prevent flooding, prevent coastal erosion, and generating approximately $2.6 million annually for nine years with regular, regular financial audits, independent citizens oversight, and requiring the funds to be used locally? Shall that measure be adopted? Next slide. The ordinance has several key features which are outlined here. It would, if passed by the voters, impose a local half-cent transaction and use tax. And that's pursuant to the Revenue and Taxations Code and state law. The second provision is the city would be required to contract with the State Department of Tax and Fee Administration, also known as the CDTFA. State law requires that such a contract for the tax to be collected and administered. The tax, if adopted, would start in April of 2023 and would sunset nine years later unless extended by the voters at a subsequent election. The proceeds of the transaction and use tax would be deposited in the city's general fund, and it would be subject to the audit requirements of the city's general fund. And finally, there would be a citizens oversight committee established, which would review the revenue and expenditures of the fund generated by the tax each year. Next slide. This is an update of the slide we showed you in February. And you will probably recall that back in February, there were only three cities looking to put revenue measures in front of the voters, namely in Burlingame, San Mateo, and Belmont. Since that time, there have also been revenue measures- revenue measures proposed in Brisbane and in Foster City and in San Bruno. And at this point in time, the measures in Brisbane, Burlingame, and San Mateo have all been approved by their city councils for consideration on the November ballot. The measures in the other cities are still under review but are likely to be considered by their city councils in the next month or so. Next slide.
And I'll, I'll jump back in. Next slide, please. So as, as was mentioned at the outset, the recommendation is to move to adopt this resolution. I won't read the, the whole thing as it was read previously. And additionally, it mentions here the general tax that requires two-thirds or four council members to place it on the ballot. And it, and it would be successful with a fifty percent plus one vote if it were placed on the ballot. Next slide. That, that does complete the, the presentation. The one additional piece that, that I would add to this, which is in the staff report, is that, given the significant structural deficit that's, that's projected, and that, you know, part of, part of the council's reasoning for considering this half cent tax is that the revenue that it is projected to generate will almost matches what the deficit projection is. So it would be an honest attempt to help our financial condition in maintaining our existing services. And I want to emphasize that the, those, the long-term forecast is really focused on being able to maintain the city's services that are provided. Because i- if we don't have a revenue measure, increased revenues through a measure like this, and then we'll, we'll always continue prudent expenditure containment, we'll always continue our economic development activities. But without a significant revenue measure or revenue increase, the, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget deliberations and the recommendations that, that I'm going to need to make are going to be very, very difficult on the city in terms of, of what we will reduce services that will need to be reduced in order to achieve a balanced budget. That completes our presentation and available for any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Thank you, staff, for that presentation. And I had some questions. So it's because the first time I think I saw that particular chart. Did that say Brisbane was bringing in two million dollars per year with their half cent sales tax?
What Brisbane is going to put on the ballot in November are two different measures. The first is a half cent sales tax. They don't have one now, but they would be the ninth city to do so. And Pacifica potentially be the tenth if, if such measures were put on the ballot and passed. And, and Vice Mayor, you are correct. They're estimating that a half cent transaction and use tax in Brisbane would bring in two million. The other item that Brisbane is also putting on the November ballot is a new business license tax for hotels. And in Brisbane, they currently collect fourteen percent on their transient occupancy tax. But in Brisbane, their view of the transient occupancy tax, is that something that the people who rent the hotel rooms pay, not the hoteliers? So in Brisbane, what they're saying is they also believe the hoteliers should pay a business license tax. And what they're proposing is a new business license tax of two dollars and fifty cents per room, per day for hotels, motels, and, you know, Airbnb and anybody else who's leasing out rooms. So those, those are the two different measures that would be on the Brisbane ballot. And they did a, the council did a, put both of those on the ballot last week at their most recent council meeting.
So is that two million for both measures combined? Or is it just for the half cent?
It's just for the half cent. The, the business license tax would be an additional two hundred and fifty thousand is their estimate.
Kind of leads into my next question, but just to dwell for a moment. Because I was, I was amazed when I saw that number because Brisbane, population-wise, is compared to us, tiny.
Yeah, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, if I can chime in, and maybe Mr. Moore knows specifically, but Brisbane has a significantly different commercial and industry base than, than does Pacifica. So some of that tax might be coming from that sector.
Got it. Okay, that makes more sense. So, um, you know, we, we on council have the benefit of reading staff reports and attending several meetings on the same topic. But I appreciate that not necessarily everyone in the audience has the same benefit. And you briefly touched on the two point six million that we currently get from our one percent versus the two point six we would, would be getting from the half cent. If you could take a moment and just slow down for a moment, rather than only reminding us, but also so that the community is thoroughly informed how it's possible that a half cent and a one cent would both equal two point six, tell us a little bit about leakage and how, at the end of the day, where they, they equate.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. And to review that, as I indicated on the earlier slide, the difference between a sales tax and a transaction and use tax is a sales tax is based on the place, or what they call the point of sale, which means that it is based on transactions that occur in the City of Pacifica. In a transaction and use tax, it's based on where the goods are delivered. And as a result of that, the basis of the transaction and use tax is different. In what we found in reviewing the potential measure with HDL, which is the City of Pacifica's sales tax consultant, is that because the City of Pacifica has a considerable amount of what's called sales tax leakage.
Yeah. So my next question, and again, I appreciate we've gone over all this thoroughly and I'm not trying to belabor for the sake of belaboring, but I want to make it crystal clear how we're coming to this conclusion for the community. Would you go over again the half cent in relation to the county? And how if we don't take up that half cent slack, that is the only half cent slack available, the county might take it instead, rendering us unable to ever have this opportunity again, or at least in the foreseeable future?
Okay. Vice Mayor, you are correct. And this also relates to a question that may come up from residents who will recall that a number of years ago, the City of Pacifica placed a one cent sales tax on the ballot. That is no longer a choice that you have because in California, the total amount of transaction and use taxes in any given county is limited to two percent. And what has happened over the last several years is there have been a number of county and countywide sales tax, or excuse me, transaction and use tax measures, both from the county itself and also from the county transportation authority, to the point where there's only a half a cent of capacity left. And you are technically, then you are correct in that it is possible that down the road, the transportation authority, the county, or somebody else could take that, even the half cent that we're talking about now. It also explains, by the way, why the eight cities that we showed on the earlier table can only raise either a quarter cent or a half cent sales tax in this county. Whereas if you look at trans, the transaction use tax proposals in other counties going on the November ballot, you will see three quarters of a cent, even one cent in other, by cities in other counties. And that's because in their counties, the county and the TA has not yet used up the additional capacity.
Thank you very much. Questions?
Just reporting that PCT is up and running.
Thank you very much. I heard the music stop in the background, so I appreciate that. City Manager, if you'd be so kind, could you tell us for a moment, remind us what kinds of personnel cuts or service cuts we're looking at if we don't pass this half cent measure?
Yes, certainly. And some information that was previously provided to city council and is in this staff report as well. Really, what, what we did as just a hypothetical is if you took the two point seven million dollar structural deficit and you divided it evenly across departments, which is not necessarily in reality how policy decisions would be made about budget cuts. But if you did divide those across all of the departments, you'd be looking at a six percent cut. And the, based on the average salary and benefits for different categories of employees, you know, and again, this is a hypothetical, but you, you would be looking at a cut of two positions from general government, five positions from police, three positions from fire, two positions from planning and building, two positions from public works, and two positions from parks, beaches, and recreation. And the City of Pacifica, based on a twenty nineteen study update, averages overall departments about twenty-three percent lower staffing than comparable jurisdictions in our area. And so we're already at a skeleton level of, of, of employees. So those, those cuts would be devastating to services to the public.
So what we're talking about for a half cent sales tax is raising two point six million for a two point seven million dollar deficit we're projecting. Is that correct? So we're, we're even, even if we pass successfully this half cent measure, we're still a hundred grand shy of where we would like to be to break even?
Yeah. Based, based on today's projections, as I mentioned, you know, prudent expenditure containment and economic development efforts all are very important to this, this sort of three-legged stool of balancing operational budget. And, you know, so we would, as we are currently, work very hard on, on economic development to bridge that hundred thousand dollar gap.
So I have one last question. This one will be the, the curve ball, because I didn't ask it ahead of time. And City Attorney might, may or may not be the one to answer, if not City Manager. But there's this bit on packet page twelve fifty-four, under placing a general revenue measure on ballot, that by law, we have to do it during an election year unless, in cases of emergency declared by unanimous vote of the city council. And I, I want to be clear on that because how I, I took it to mean staring at a two point seven million dollar deficit. If it should happen not to go through this year, and we're looking at a position in which we need to let go, you know, five police officers, three firefighters, you know, staff member after staff member. If next year we're looking at that and we think to ourselves, holy schneid keys, it's either we do that or we try and put this on the ballot again in an off year, and the five of us, whomever we happen to be, can agree on that, we could actually do that again next year if we determine, yes, it really is that big an emergency and we should have passed it last year. And let's try and tell everybody what an emergency it is again this year, that in a worst case scenario would be an option.
Correct. Yes. And, and all it would require is a resolution setting forth what the, what the basis of the financial emergency is. That's correct.
Police officers and three firefighters. It's sounding like a good start to bed. Let's try not to think about going there. Thank you so much.
Are any other questions from council? No. All right. Let's go to public comment.
Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Alyssa. Close public comment, council.
Mayor Beer, I, I did see, that was rather quick. I did see a hand pop up, so.
Okay. Thank you. It looks like there's one hand raised by Dinah Verbi. Dinah, you may now unmute yourself. Oh, Dinah, thank you. You may now unmute yourself to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager, for finding my hand there. I, first of all, I, I want to say that I'm fully cognizant of the need for this, for this revenue. I understand the issues around the structural deficit. One thing I'm surprised by is that it seems to only require a majority rather than a two-thirds majority vote to pass. And I would like to have that clarified. The other thing I just want to say is, I hope there is a plan B because I don't know very many people who are planning to vote for this tax, no matter how much we need it. And many people, particularly on the progressive side, feel that this is a very regressive tax because it impacts those who are least able to afford it the most. And I am very sympathetic to that point of view. I also very much want to see revenue coming into the city. And so my question, I guess, is what's the campaign strategy? Has the council adopted a budget for a campaign? Do you have some really good consultants who are going to persuade people to vote for this? Who is, who, who are the voters who are going to vote for this? Because frankly, I don't know very many. And so this is obviously the worst time economically and politically to be putting a tax measure on the ballot when gas is over six dollars a gallon and people can't afford housing. So, you know, I'm just really concerned that this isn't going to pass. So I would like to hear some discussion about, you know, how is this, who's going to be running the campaign? Who's going to be funding the campaign? Where are you going to find your base of support for this? And what's plan B and plan C if it doesn't work? Thank you.
Thank you, Dinah.
Thank you, Dinah. There is one more hand raised at this time. It looks like by Chris with no last name. Chris, if you can state your name for the record and unmute yourself to speak. Thank you.
There we go. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Chris. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chris Redfield. Good evening, staff and council. This, this is, it's kind of funny. I just heard the, the word coming that this is, I saw in the graphic put up there, that Pacifica is actually one of the last cities to put a cent, a half cent ballot measure, et cetera, on the ballot. It seems that we're at the, the end of the road here to do it. So there are several other cities that, and again, have extremely good economic bases that are still adding because they aren't in a deficit. Brisbane was a good example of that because they do have a good economic base, business base. So this is unless people really want to start losing services. And this is not a threat. This is an actual thing that will happen. We will lose police officers. We will lose firefighters. We will lose overtime personnel when things get hairy during the wintertime at night. So this is critical. That, I don't think that needs to be a really big sales pitch to get this done because these are realities. And that is why every other city that were just posted on the graphic are taking measures of this kind. The, you know, looking for, for other things to bolster that money. Because yes, those, those initial funds, those one-time funds will disappear and then will dry up very Because yes, those, those initial funds, those one-time funds will disappear and then will dry up very quickly. And the citizens will feel the results of that. It's, uh, at some point, we all have to look in the mirror and go, you know, if we want it, we got to pay for it. That's the way it works. There is no such thing as a free lunch. And if this does not happen, if this does not pass, and it is a simple majority, um, the, the ramifications will be felt by every person in Pacifica. It's not significant. I do understand the economic hardships that everybody is going through right now. Um, and that includes the city. And if you can't include the city in the hardship, you're, you're just not paying attention. Because, uh, it, it, the individual gets hurt, but if you want to continue quality services, emergency services, uh, those are the critical things that this will pay for. And again, this is, uh, you know, it's a nine-year extension on this. It can be voted in uh, and extended, but that is the, uh, the sunset on that. But I strongly urge, uh, the citizens of Pacifica to strongly consider this as a, the most viable option to maintain our level of services that we all know and love. Please vote for it. It will happen and bad things will happen if we don't get it. So thank you. I really appreciate the time. Thanks, staff.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay. We'll close public comment now. Bring it back to council. I think it'd be good to answer, um, some of the questions that were posed, if that's okay. Um, specifically, why is it fifty percent plus one instead of the two-thirds majority?
So, oh, go ahead.
I think we can have the city attorney do it.
Sorry, didn't mean to. Um, so yes, thank you. Those are excellent questions from, um, Ms. Furbey. So with regard to why is it only a simple majority, it's because this is a general purpose tax. It is not a special tax. A special tax, which does require a two-thirds vote, is a tax which is specifically designated for a specific purpose, meaning, um, you'll see it for, you know, police or fire or street paving. But that is the only purpose. This tax is a general tax, which is going into the general fund for all municipal services. So if there's, if none of the fund revenues are being designated for any specific purpose, but are designated for a general purpose, it is a majority of vote. Um, I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you wanted me to touch on the campaign issue, that is a legal issue. It's not necessarily just a council decision. It is a, there's a legal prohibition on the council, once they do place this measure, if they do place this measure on the ballot, um, that the city is prohibited from organizing any sort of campaign. What the city can do, and what I'm certain that staff will do, is provide informational material only, no campaign, no advocacy. But the city can respond to questions and can provide, um, basic information regarding the tax and what the tax will be used for and other, you know, similar, um, questions and, and issues. But, um, I hope that answers the, uh, Ms. Furbey's questions. And I, I don't know, Madam Mayor, if there are other questions that, that I could answer or, you know, Mr. Mora or Mr. Woodhouse.
I think that was all from, from our, um, callers, but how about council? Does council have any, anything else?
We've had a lot of meetings about this, so my questions have been covered and Tiger's articulated them, so.
Tiger, do you have something else?
I have something that resembles a question and just something to throw out there for, uh, council consideration. And really, I'm, I'm putting this into discussion to accentuate the fact that, um, on the county level, that half cent could be taken away from us. But when I came to the third where, so I'm on page twelve sixty-two, for those who are looking at the packet. And I'm looking at the third whereas on twelve sixty-two. Um, I talked to city attorney ahead of time. And so again, this is for everyone's consideration, a very slight tweak of wording. And it's where it says the city wishes to maintain vital local services and protect the local control with funding that cannot be taken by the state to address community needs and priorities. And the way I interpreted that as I was reading it was, well, the county could take that half cent away from us too if a measure were to be passed on the county level. And so I was just proposing, um, to tweak it to say state and county. Um, and that's the very slight adjustment I would propose making there if there's buy-in from council. And again, at the end of the day, I'm kind of wanting to accentuate the fact that if we don't use this half cent on our end, the county can use it on theirs.
I'm okay with that.
Me too. Yeah.
Um, I had one, I wanted also, um, let me bring it up in my thing. Highlight on packet page twelve seventy-two. And again, having had the benefit of reading through this thing where the community may or may not have, um, there's a, a feature of having this passed, that there's a citizens oversight committee that's, um, written into us passing this. And specifically what it says is, so the community is aware, although not otherwise required by state law, we're doing this willingly. The city council shall, by resolution adopted before the operative date of this chapter, establish a citizens oversight committee to review the revenue and expenditure of funds from the tax imposed under this chapter. The members' terms and qualifications and duties and scope of the committee shall be established by the resolution. And, um, that reminded me of our, uh, engaged community, uh, city goal, which is, includes creating opportunities to expand public participation, increase, increase communication and build community. And I thought that that was just the most charming example of that. And while we're spending so much time lately, um, engaged in varying levels of how the community feels about us, um, this is an opportunity where we're not just saying, hey, we know tax isn't always the most popular thing, but we need it or it's not going to be good. While we're doing this, we're giving you the opportunity to see exactly how each of those cents are spent um, to ensure that not only is this needed, it's being spent in all the right places and we're doing that voluntarily. So I really wanted to highlight that feature of this also.
Okay, so both council member Beckmeyer and Vodalas take themselves off of me. So did you want to say something? No?
I'll just say that, you know, nobody likes a tax. I mean, I don't think people run to the ballot box to vote yes for a tax. I think it's important to keep in mind what we're supporting, which is our city. And, um, when I think about first responders, I very much think about our, of course, our police, fire and EMTs. But I also think about our Department of Public Works. And they are the guys and gals who come out when the tree falls in the middle of the night. You know, the thought of eroding those services in any way is just terrifying to me because the work they do is so essential. They're, they, they help to make our community what it is. And, and so the idea of losing positions for me, especially there, is just devastating. And when you consider our weather impacts, we certainly have seen this last year with the rains, when we have heavy rains with king tides, the impact that that has for our community. You know, I know that the funds would go exactly where the ballot measure language says they would go because that's where we spend our money on. Anyone can look at our budget. In fact, we're going to have a budget item pretty soon. Um, that really shows exactly where the funds go. And so it's our people. It's primarily our people and, and it's our staff. And so that's what keeps our city great. Um, and so while I don't love the idea of a tax and I'm very sensitive to the timing, the fact is we too need support. The city is going into a significant structural deficit and a cycled structural deficit. So that is why now. Um, I can't comment on the regressive nature of this tax. I was thinking maybe Mr. Mora would have something to add to that. Uh, like, can you give an example of a purchase of a hundred dollars? You know, or two hundred dollars. I just filled my car with gas the other day. It was two hundred, a hundred dollars. I was like, what? Triple digits. That's, you know, it's real. I get it. But, you know, anyway, I just wondered if you could put it in context for us, um, in terms of what does it mean? A half cent TUT. Thank you.
Essentially, it would be an additional, um, you know, half cent on, on the items that are received in Pacifica. And again, where you would pick up the additional revenue would be on online sales, on vehicle sales where you don't currently get the, the, the one percent sales tax because you don't have the auto dealers that you'd see in other cities, that sort of thing. Um, in terms of, you know, whether it's a progressive tax or regressive tax, I, I, you know, I suppose you could you know, argue both sides of that, uh, point.
Thank you.
Um, you know, I, I think that people forget that we also, so the tax, uh, excuse me, the gas went up. We pay that too. Um, so do all of our employees. And we really need to keep our employees. We need to pave our streets. We need everybody who we have now. It's really difficult and, and we're going to have to keep going forward. We can't go backwards. We can't pay less for the things that we need to purchase. And we're doing our best for the city of Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Yeah, I, I feel the same way. I, I I just don't see another way right now. And I, and I think that this is what we need to do. And like council member O'Neil said, and we, we've talked about it. I don't have a whole lot to add except for that. I think it's, it's exactly what we need, like everyone else has said, so. Tiger?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And, um, as I was thinking about council member Beckmeyer's question earlier, you know, out of a hundred dollars, it's fifty cents. Um, and that, that puts into perspective for me. Uh, I'd like to make a motion if there's an objection. So I move to adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Pacifica calling and giving notice for holding a general municipal election on Tuesday, November eighth, twenty twenty-two for submission to the qualified voters of the city, a ballot measure regarding a half-cent transactions and use sales tax for general city revenue purposes and requesting the San Mateo County to consolidate the city's general municipal election with the November eighth, twenty twenty-two statewide general election and to provide election services with the slight amendment to the third whereas in the resolution and county, uh, as discussed.
Sorry, second kid.
Here, roll call vote, please.
I think I heard the second, uh, first made by council member O'Neil, uh, have the motion as stated by council, uh, but may Mayor Proton Big Stick will start the roll call vote with council member Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Council member Vodalas.
Yes.
Council member O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And, uh, that passes five to zero.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brian, for being with us again. Thank you, council member O'Neil for joining us.
Bye.
Bye. All right, we will now move on to item number fourteen, which is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three operating and capital budget. We have with us our city manager and our assistant city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Beer and council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I, uh, am going to quickly turn the presentation over to assistant city manager Carter. What I wanted to do though, from the outset, is, um, just specifically thank Ms. Carter for the energy and effort that she's put into this budget as well as the entire finance team and a huge list of acknowledgements that in the budget book, you'll see my transmittal memo, uh, near the beginning of the budget book. And there's a large paragraph at the end of that that is called acknowledgements. And there's a significant number of staff and effort that have gone into this. But particularly the other aspect of the budget book that you'll see this year round, and it's thanks to Ms. Carter and Ms. Baranti and others in finance, uh, is there, we are evolving the quality of the city's budget book, uh, towards GFOA awards of excellent standards. So there's a significant amount of, uh, data and other documents that are in there. Um, in addition to the most important thing, which is, which is the quality, you know, budget work and the balancing. But just the budget book as a, as a product has improved significantly. And it's, um, it's, it's taken a lot of time and particularly Ms. Carter's time, uh, regularly late at night, uh, us texting and, and working things out. And so I just wanted to upfront really thank, uh, Ms. Carter for that effort. And then let her guide you through this presentation tonight.
Well, thank you so much, Kevin, for your kind words and introduction. And, uh, as the city manager stated, the item before you tonight is the adoption of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three operating and capital budget. And, uh, we can go to the next slide. So there are four resolutions in your packets tonight that we recommend that you adopt tonight. So the first one is actual adoption of the budget, approving fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three operating and capital budget. And please note that the, the capital appropriation of, uh, one point two million from the Roy Davis Trust Fund will require four out of five words. Uh, the second resolution is approving the can appropriation limit for twenty-two, twenty-three. This is required by California constitution. Uh, and again, we are happy to report that we are way under the limit. Uh, the, uh, next resolution is approval of the investment policy, also government code requirement. We made no changes to the policy. It's just, uh, again, the code requires us to adopt it annually. And finally, approval of the master fee schedule with the annual CIP, uh, CPI increases and, uh, addition of the parking law and pavement impact fees as, uh, the council already approved in prime meetings. Let's go to the next slide. I will keep my presentation pretty brief today. It's already late and we had a busy agenda tonight. Um, so tonight I will give you just quick budget overview and highlights and, um, as you may remember, the more detailed presentation of budget options we discussed at the last meeting, so we are not going to repeat them tonight. Next slide. So tonight, we are finally at the finish line in this project. So with the adoption of the budget, you, you can see this, uh, budget process has been completed and the meeting tonight represents the fifth public meeting related to the twenty-three, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three budget. So you are, uh, considering it for the final adoption. Yes, the next slide. So before we go into budget details, uh, let's take a look at the highlights for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, proposed budget. Well, first of all, we are bringing the structurally balanced budget. And, uh, that's one of the highlights. It's not, uh, easy, um, to do in the current economic conditions. And especially since we, uh, discussed the prospective, uh, structural challenges that we have for the upcoming upcoming, uh, years. So the general fund revenues are projected at forty-seven point three million, which is about ten percent above the revised budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two that we presented to you at mid-year. The general fund expenditures are projected at also forty-seven point three million, which is about eight percent above the revised budget. And, uh, I also want to note that the expenditure include the one-time capital transfers of six hundred and fifty-five thousand towards the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three CIP program. And the difference between these two numbers, uh, create a small surplus of a little bit over three thousand dollars that we project to add to the general. that we project to add to the general fund balance at the end of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, the undesignated general fund balance is projected, uh, to be about five point five million, which is about twelve percent of the general fund expenditures. And, uh, finally, um, just the highlights on the C I P budget, twenty-two, twenty-three C I P budget, uh, of twenty-one point eight million, uh, consists of fifty projects, including seventeen new C I P projects at the cost of three point eight million. And, uh, as I mentioned before, the C I P program also includes one point two million allocation from, uh, the Roy Davis, uh, trust fund that requires separate, uh, approval, or we require separate approval. Next slide. So this slide is actually demonstrating that the, the, the budget that, that before you tonight is, uh, balanced. And this is a quick demonstration of the net, projected net change to the general fund balance. You can see that the difference between the general fund revenues and expenditures create this small ending surplus of, uh, three thousand. But what is really important that we, you can see the second circle in the middle of this page that we, we actually including in these numbers, in these calculations, the capital transfers of six hundred and fifty-five thousand. So what it means that this budget does not dip into general fund balances even for the one-time uh, capital transfers, because by nature, the capital transfers considers it one-time and, uh, would be allowed to kind of use the designated fund balances for this purpose. Next slide. So in the next couple of slides, I will go over the general fund revenues and expenditures and the general fund balances. So let's start with the general fund revenues. Uh, again, we, we are showing the very nice nine point seven percent in peace over the revised budget. This slide shows a breakdown between the general fund revenues of total of forty-seven point three million by major categories. And you can see that seventy percent of general fund revenues come from various taxes. Um, and also another highlight, so this, uh, this revenues include four point six million of, uh, uh, our location. So this is our second tranche location that we anticipate receive in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Next slide. This is the same information, but some people like to see it in the table format. So you can see our total general fund revenues. It might be a little bit easier to read. And we can go to next slide. Let's talk about general fund expenditures. Uh, the total general fund expenditures are projected at also forty-fourty-seven point three million. That includes transfers and allocations and, uh, represents about eight percent of the revised twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, operating expenditures are budgeted at forty-six point six million. And again, this, uh, total budget includes the capital transfers of six hundred and fifty-five. But if we subtract them out, so the, the budget, the operating budget is a little bit lower, forty-six point six million. And again, the chart, uh, shows how this expenditure is divided by type. And you can see that the majority of city services are performed in-house, as we discussed in the previous agenda item. So salaries and benefits being the city's highest expenditure categories for general fund with sixty-five percent, uh, followed by twenty-one percent of contractual services. Next slide. Again, same information presented in table format, a little bit differently, uh, and shows a little bit of historical data for you. And as I said, again, Pacifica is a full-service city with sixty-five percent of its general fund expenditures designated to salaries and benefits. Twenty-one percent for contractual services, eight percent for materials and supply category, and six percent in various transfers. And in the next slide, you can see how this general fund expenditures are broken down within different departments. And, uh, this chart demonstrates that the public safety is about forty-one percent of the general fund budget, followed by general government as the third largest department in the city. Let's go to the next slide. So after factoring in all restricted reserves and operating contingencies that we discussed at the last meeting, uh, you can see that the undesigned general fund budget is projected at five points, uh, well, almost five point five million or twelve percent of the general fund operating expenditures, um, including the one-time, uh, transfers, capital transfers. This amount is a little bit lower than the government, the Finance Officers Association recommendation, uh, for government entities uh, that recommends having no less than two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. So if you do the math and now, uh, case, it will be seven point eight million for twenty-two, twenty-three. But if you combine this undesigned balance with a ten percent policy designation above, you can see it on the assigned reserves, uh, resource balances. Uh, it will give you a total of ten point one million, which is very well combined and actually slightly above the threshold of, uh, minimum compliance level by general authority. So again, speaks to the point that, uh, the budget is balanced that is before you tonight. Let's go to the next slide. There are no changes, um, to other funds from the last meeting. So you've seen the slide before. Uh, the summary of revenues, expenditures and fund balances for all city funds, uh, combined here. But you can see detailed, uh, breakdown by each individual fund in attachment three to your, uh, reports. And also we added the brand new section to the actual budget document, uh, providing additional, uh, description and fund information for each individual fund that starts on page fourteen of six of your packets. And, uh, let's go to the next slide. This brings me to the last slide of my presentation and again, back to the list of recommendations to adopt four resolutions that are in your packets tonight. And, uh, again, this is the last slide that I want to take a moment to, uh, thank our city manager. And I know he, he started by acknowledging everybody's efforts in this, uh, in this work. But I do want to take a moment to thank, uh, Kevin Woodhouse for his leadership guiding us through this budget process. Preparation of the city budget is the most collaborative project that includes every single department in the city. And, uh, I would like to thank the entire executive team for the time commitment to this process. And especially since we changed the process and the budget format today, this year. And I know that changes are never easy and especially under the time pressure. So, um, I also want to thank my staff, finance staff, especially Mario, Shrap, and all financial analysts for the long nights and weekends helping to put these documents together. And, uh, Ryan Marquez and Pablo Porres for creating C I P budget. And finally, I would like to thank the city council for your leadership and strategic vision in setting budget priorities and implementing the high standards and best practices in municipal budgeting. And on our end, staff is committed to continue addressing your priorities and improving the quality of the document in the future year to continue making it more informative and transparent. With that, that would be, I would sponsor any questions.
Thank you so much, Julia, for all of your hard work and for your staff. Do we have any questions? Seeing none, I will send it to public comment. Open public comment, please.
Madam Mayor, there are no hands raised at this time.
I'll pause.
Yeah.
Okay. Then bring it back and close public comments. Bring it back to council. Tiger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, with all that gratitude just expressed by staff, I would like to express some gratitude back. City manager, you did an exceptionally good job when you hired Ms. Julia Carter to our team. And Ms. Carter, um, your, your work is, uh, sight to behold. And thank you so much for all that work that you, in collaboration with the entirety of our city staff, has done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Agreed.
Councilmember Beckmeyer, I'm sorry, Sue.
Um, I just wanted to request, uh, when, when the city manager was referring to the budget book, um, I'm just gonna show you what the budget book is. This is the budget book. So it's a lot, but the format that he was talking about is there are lots of graphs and charts that aren't just tables and tables and tables of numbers that we've seen in the past. Um, for example, I'm just flipping to this page. Um, the paginations weird because it's packet page thirteen fifty, but, um, it's not quite that long. Um, department work programs. And there's a narrative portion that goes through what each department does and what their projects and priorities are. Um, so it's, you know, sometimes people go, oh, budgets, I don't understand all that. It's just too much. It's bloated. But if you really look at the numbers, um, and when Mr. Woodhouse was referring to the layout changes, this is a, a description of all the, um, enterprise funds, which are restricted funds. It specifically says what each one is, what it's for. Um, and then appended to the entire book is the capital improvement budget, um, which is very interesting because it tells you what all the projects are that are coming up. But it also, when you stop and look at it, it shows the fiscal years, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, which year we actually project being able to pay for the project we want to do. And in some cases, it's not even there. It's unfunded. But it's an important project and this is the kind of thing that demonstrates, you know, where our fiscal standing is. Um, and then the last piece is the fee structure. So, um, I would like to request city manager and, and assistant city manager, if we could please put copies of this budget in libraries as we have done with our general fund, uh, I mean, um, gen- uh, general plan updates and Shaw Park specific plan, so that they're accessible. And I think you always have one available at City Hall, um, at the community center. Just so if people would like to just peruse it, they would have the opportunity to do that, not necessarily online where they're scrolling like this, um, and, and maybe they don't have the technology to be able to do that. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we would be happy to do that. That's a great idea. One, one of the, uh, kind of administrative tasks is after adoption of the proposed budget by council, we do the final, uh, kind of proofread and refinement and, um, eh, you know, uh, making sure all the charts are labeled properly, all of that. So I, I would just suggest when we print the final version, it'll be that after we reach that step and then get it out there. Uh, it'll be online, of course, but get it in the libraries and at City Hall, front counter, et cetera.
I'm glad you, um, went through that, Councilmember Beckmeyer, because it was really wonderful to be able to look through it all and, and it made me want to read it more, you know, because I, it, there's that visual like stimulation that makes it so much nicer to, to take in the information because not all of us can look at a chart and, and, and understand, you know? So I, I really appreciate the format and all the work that went into it. Thank you so much. Okay, council. I do believe we need a motion.
Do they have to be separate or can it be all together?
It can be all together.
Um, and just to, just to point out in the recommendation that the Roy Davies resolution requires a four-fifths vote.
I moved that we adopt the budget. Um, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the page. Um, and accept the one point two million Roy Davies amount spent and, um, e- accepted as presented.
I'll second.
With the motion by Councilmember Vodarlos and seconded by Councilmember Beckmeyer, I'll start the roll call vote. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vodarlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil, uh, appears to be absent. Mayor Proton Big Stick.
Yes.
Mayor Beer.
Yes.
And that passes with a vote of four to zero with Councilmember O'Neil absent.
Thank you so much, Julia. I appreciate you. Okay.
Thank you.
So we can adjourn our meeting now at nine forty-five P M. Good job. Good night. Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Be safe on Fourth of July.
Yeah.